We'll call our regular meeting of City Council for Monday, November 20th to order. First council, first order of business this morning is our delegations and 2.1 we have Joanna Coons from Success by Six and Children First is in attendance this morning to do a proclamation for National Child Day. Good morning.
Good morning.
Come up, come up.
I brought one of my children.
Nice. Wouldn't be appropriate to not have a Child Day proclamation without having a child.
Yes, that's right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
So it's my pleasure this morning to read our proclamation. Whereas on March 19th, 1993, the Government of Canada proclaimed November 20th as National Child Day to commemorate two historic events for children. The adoption of the United Nations Declaration of the Rights of Children in 1959 and the UN adoption of the Convention of the Rights of a Child in 1989. Whereas it is a day to remember that children need love and respect to grow to their full potential and whereas it is a day to marvel at their uniqueness and all they have to offer. And whereas it is a day to celebrate the family and think about how adults affect the development of children close to them. And whereas this year, National Child Day celebrates that children have the right to learn about and enjoy their own culture. Whereas many individuals, organizations, and municipalities throughout British Columbia have since 1993 organized events in celebration of National Child Day. Now therefore I do hereby proclaim November 20th as National Child Day at Dawson Creek. There you go, Joanna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to say too, tomorrow at Dawson Creek Mall between 10:00 and 1:00, we are having our Children's Festival to celebrate National Child Day. So it's a free family event for people to come down and we're giving a whole bunch of tickets away to the Sharon and Bram show, so pretty excited about that. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Joanna. Thank you for coming in this morning.
Alright, thank you.
Nice to see you. And next up, 2.2, we have Melanie Turkup, Sustainability Clerk and a delegation and attendant to for idle less week proclamation and their shop local proclamation campaign. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. No, 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 come on up here. Hide over on the side, yeah, I don't think so. Perfect, thank you. Thanks for coming in this morning, you guys. Whereas protecting our airshed is a shared responsibility whereby individuals can make a significant and sustainable difference by idling less, choosing alternative transportation, and adopting an attitude that values clean air as a finite resource. And whereas toxic gases generated by vehicle exhaust are harmful to human health and air quality and contribute to the greenhouse gas effect, furthermore, vehicle exhaust contains fine particulate matter that through frequent exposure can lead to respiratory diseases and chronic illness with children most commonly exposed. And whereas even on cold winter days, vehicle engines require three minutes or less of idling. Now therefore I do hereby proclaim November 24th to 30th, 2018, as idle less week in Dawson Creek and encourage all residents to take a proactive role in minimizing harmful health and environmental impacts of excessive vehicle idling.
So on our sign here we have, if every Canadian driver reduced idling by just three minutes a day, in one year we would save over 630 million in fuel costs and over 1.4 million tons of greenhouse gas emissions. Also, children breathe in more air per pound of body weight than adults and their lungs are still developing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys, thank you for coming in.
No, she's good.
Now we got the next one. I don't have another one.
Shop and Local. Okay, this is exciting. Okay. Okay, we're talking about shop Christmas in Dawson Creek and tourism has produced the holiday handbook for 2018. And we're going to start out with our November 23rd. So everyone should know, hopefully, that November 23rd is our Christmas tree light up at 7:00 PM at the beautiful tree that I just saw got put up yesterday. And so if everyone wants to come and see surprise guests and we have some elves handing out candy canes and we have lots of other things going on that night, it'd be great to see you. And then we have on Friday is also Plaid Friday for Love Dawson Creek. And then we carry on to, we have shop locally and you spend $40 at local business participating businesses. And last year, did you know that we had received 1,609 tickets? That meant people shopped locally and spent over $40. We had 11 participating businesses, we had 17 donations received that valued over $5,000. And we kept in our community by shopping local event $191,000. And if anyone would like more information, I'd be happy to provide that. And would you like to say something, Stephanie?
On behalf of QP Local 2403 as Vice President, we're excited to support shopping locally in town here. We'll be donating as well to that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys, thank you. Good job. And in case I forget, thank you to the oilmen's for that tree. Unbelievable again this year and great job. Here's your proclamation, Joanna. Thanks, Mel. Now on to our agenda item three, new councillor business, 3.1 councillor Javecov.
So I'll read this out. Proposal to investigate feasibility of selling vacant residential building lots on the south side of the 300 block of 100B Avenue. And if you're not sure where that is, it's above Atchison Refrigeration on the upper side of that hillside. There's a potential opportunity to sell 14 city lots that are surveyed located within a park on the south side of the 300 block of 100B Avenue. 14 lots surveyed on the south side of 100B Avenue numbered 301 to 353. The positives to the city, 14 lots at a conservative estimate of $50,000 for each total of $700,000 in one-time revenue. 14 homes built assessed at a conservative estimate of $350,000 each will result in an annual property tax and infrastructure fees of about $35,000. Existing road sewer line and water line along 100B Avenue can be utilized. So it increases the density of the city. No additional land required. Reduction in park maintenance costs. Overall reduction in park maintenance combined with one-time revenue of about $700,000. An ongoing tax and fees of about $35,000 per year represents a significant benefit to the city. The negative is the removal of about two and a half acres of parkland and removal of the swing set that's up there. Considerations, this initiative will improve the financial situation of the city. Minimal park areas affected with other parks within five blocks as well as the remainder of this site on the south side. So there's still some remaining park area on the south side of those lots. Administration will need to investigate the possible showstoppers to this proposal so some budget may be required. So my motion is to approve this proposal in principle and ask administration to report on the feasibility of development of these building lots.
Thank you. So we have a motion, do we have a second or councillor Parslow, discussion? Councillor Lextrum?
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for the motion, Paul. So on this, when I look at it, is this the formal zoning P2 of this land? Do we know?
Duncan?
Kevin, do you know the zoning on that piece?
I assume it's P2, it's parks and recreation. It's zone park and it's dedicated park.
Okay, in dedicated park, does council have the sole authority to remove parkland or does it have to go through cabinet, I believe? Doesn't it, or through municipal affairs?
So through Your Worship, Brenda, Brenda's done some considerable amount of work on the park piece here in some other areas. Go ahead, Brenda.
Yeah, through Your Worship, it does require the approval of the electors. So usually that's done through the alternate approval process or a referendum.
Okay, thank you. And just one follow-up, I know the motion is to investigate it and bring a report back, which I think is worthy of consideration. I think if we go down this path looking at parkland, I think we've got to be very cautious. I mean, we've got a city full of parkland. I think if the numbers hold true today, we have more parkland in a city our size than any jurisdiction in the province, or we used to. So the other thing I would encourage as you look at this report to bring back to us is an access path problem between any of those lots for any of the children, if it's something that could be looked at. Many of our subdivisions have access walkways. I know some have worked well, others haven't in the past, but it may be something you want to look at as well if you're pursuing this report.
Councillor Javecov?
Yeah, I didn't include it in here, but another idea may be that this is handled instead of individual lots, that it's a development area. So, you know, there's different ways to deal with it if, you know, I think the issue is going to be whether there's some problems with the slope there, stability, or subsurface water or something. But if there isn't and we can sell it, there's some different options that could be considered.
Okay.
So through Your Worship, if this is approved, the first piece we'll be looking at is why those lots weren't sold or why they weren't developed. We have some other lots in town and that have also, you know, not been developed and for reasons whether it be, you know, potential flooding or fill. First piece, we'll look at the history. At some point, if we go down this path, we may have to look at some kind of geotechnical work as well, just to determine the stability of that bank.
So the motion is that you're going to bring back a report to council to give us the information in terms of what some of the pros and cons as councillor Javecov has outlined, and that's a consideration then that council can look at. Further discussion on the motion? Ready for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Anything further, councillor Javecov?
No.
3.2 councillor Parslow?
Yes, before I forget, this additional to this matter, because you're going to ask me anything else, so can I have the anything else first?
Sure.
So just, I promised the people who are working hard to raise funds for the Network Ministry that I would encourage my fellow councillors, and particularly the mention was that the mayor, go to Safeway or wherever it's going to be held so that you can contribute to the purchase of the O'Brien School by the Network Ministry for the great service they're providing for the school. So I just put in a plug in for them. The orientation session we had, I thoroughly enjoyed it until Kevin Henderson made mention of three things which totally upset me. Kevin doesn't usually do that.
He's a pretty good guy, normally.
He's a pretty good guy overall, yes. But one of them, this I guess to Blair and to Jeremy, we've been engaged in trying to be in a position so that we can secure funding to deal with flood mitigation and there's a process that has to be followed. We have followed that process and we were under the impression that if we followed that process, that funding would flow so we can move on with this. And we set aside, last year we set aside half a million dollars to begin a savings fund so that we have our funding in place to contribute when an acceptable flood mitigation plan is developed. And then I heard at the orientation session that that funding is oversubscribed to or is not eligible, we're not going to be, may be eligible for it, but we're not going to be able to access it. And I believe that you have an update on that, because I was going to suggest that we get onto this quickly, because 70-odd million dollars of development as well as infrastructure are under risk each and every springed or significant rain event. But I think you've already been dealing with this, I would like to have an update.
Sure, so when Kevin had provided his update and there's now this number of communities, large and small, that are applying for that grant funding for, that we were looking for for the next step, was the, there was a worry that we may not get in that lineup. And so I've reached out to, and we did talk to the folks from Emergency Management BC at Union and BC Municipalities Meeting and told them and talked to them about our next steps in our planning, the hydrology planning this year with the, and the impacts of 8th Street Bridge. So I've reached out to the Deputy Minister of Becky Denlinger, and she's responsible for Emergency Management BC. And I have a call with her this afternoon set up for 3 o'clock, 3:30 I think. And we did exchange emails and she did mention, she knows, we absolutely know that you guys have been doing the work on it and we're really pleased about that. So we'll follow it up with them just to ensure that we get the attention to that grant funding that's required for us and getting its work done.
Good, because it's a major, major issue for so many people here, thank you.
So, yeah, so I do have a call this afternoon, I think at 3:30 or 4:00. Anything further?
He did that first.
He did that first.
So 3.3, we have councillor Lextrum, you're ready for yours?
I am, thank you.
You got your computer ready and?
I'm all set.
Any notes you want to give us?
Alright, yeah, no heads up. So it's an issue I think we're probably all aware of in Dawson Creek. The issue of CN and the traffic they have, it's both good and bad. One, train traffic means we have commerce happening within our boundaries. I think people are happy about that. It moves our goods, particularly agriculture, Louisiana Pacific, huge beneficiaries of the train service. But my concern, and it's been raised by numerous people both during the campaign and before I even thought of running for council, the whistle that goes through our town at about five different locations every time they go through. You can't blame the train engineer because they're operating under their safety guidelines of what has to occur at a crossing, but at all hours of the night, whether it's, you know, 8, 10, 12, 2, 4 in the morning, the whistle goes. And there has to be some way that we can work with CN to adjust that. It just doesn't seem right to me that these trains are going to travel through our community, wake people up every time they go through, and it's not every night. Many times they're hauling three cars, so I'm not sure whether it's a scheduling issue or what it is. But I believe we have dealt with this Duncan, or have began the process, but I would, if I could get an update, I could maybe speak further to the issue and my concern I have.
Duncan? So through Your Worship, on October 24th, we sent a letter to Jocelyn Young, the Community Affairs Lead. I actually had an opportunity to follow up with Jocelyn on Friday and just see where that letter sat, and we had a brief conversation and she said, you know, within a week she would have something back to us formally in writing, but in short, she reiterated some of the things you've said. The pattern and the length of the whistle is established by Transport Canada. She also mentioned that the, each train actually has a black box similar to an airplane and that it records the information, including the whistling, and that if there is a concern at a particular time, on a particular date, they would be able to look at that and see if it has been in excess or that there is something going on there. However, you know, through conversation indicated they wouldn't do that for every single circumstance, but if there's a particular time where we were concerned or a pattern, they would take a look at that if they want, if we wanted. She also mentioned 2021 Transport Canada is introducing some new requirements for those crossings and expects there'll be some shared costs required, and she was going to provide some further information in that matter as well. And lastly, that there is a step process where you can invest in some infrastructure at those crossings, and she said there's about 12 or 14 steps, something along those lines, and she would send me some information. And really, it's an agreement between the city and the railway and Transport Canada to say this is what we're going to do and this is the outcomes we're looking for, and then Transport Canada would have to approve that plan. So she's going to send me some more information. I should have it by the end of this week, if not, it'll be next week.
Alright.
Thank you Duncan. Could we also pursue with her, could, I know whistle cessation has taken place in other communities across this country. Can she give us a list of those ones that have exercised that work previous to ourselves as well as any costs associated with that? And I'm sure she doesn't want us to, every time the whistle blows when I wake up at 2:00 in the morning for me to document that and mail it to her. I mean, it's pretty standard. I'm not saying cut the trains out, but there's something wrong either with their scheduling pattern, there's something going on. It just doesn't make sense in a town our size that, and you can hear it throughout the community, that we can't find a solution. I believe we can. So I'll look forward to the report that you're able to bring back after we receive the information from her, and then we can maybe put a plan of action going forward from there. So thank you.
Thanks councillor Lextrum. And you know, there's two other things I'm just thinking about. So at UCM as well as FCM, CN are there, and we could always use that as an opportunity to meet with them, just voice our concerns. FCM this year is in Quebec City, I think, and we always get an invitation from Sean Finn, the Executive Vice President. So it would be a really good opportunity for us to get in front of CN, once we get some follow-up information in terms of, as you've said, find a solution and engage with them on that.
Alright, good, thank you. Any other councillor business? Councillor Wilbur?
And on that note too, CN, they'll also be at the NCLGA in May, so that might give us a longer time period to have a conversation with Jocelyn as well. And on the NCLGA note, we just had a board meeting here this weekend, and we've lost several directors because of municipal election. One of them was held by a councillor in Dawson Creek. So they will be putting out a call for members. We need to have a full board and have quorums. I'm just encouraging my colleagues, if they're interested, please, you know, look into having that seat as a director on NCLGA. I'm done in May as past president, so we will have nobody after the AGM from our area, so.
Is Gord still the president?
Gord is till May, and then it will be Lara Beckett out of Fraser Fort George Regional District. So we're kind of losing our northeast seats and it's good to have a balanced board, so I'll just put that out there for any of my colleagues that might be interested. We had our proclamation on idle this week, and so Love Dawson Creek again is partnering with Sustainable Dawson Creek on the Christmas shopping. So November 23rd, which works great with the Christmas tree light up, is Plaid Friday. And really what that is, is a northern program to just encourage shopping local. So Melanie did give us a number on dollars that were spent last year. So 75 cents of every one of those dollars stays local. It stays in our community and gets spent again and again and again. So I'm just going to encourage the community, my colleagues, do as much, if not all of your Christmas shopping locally. You'd be surprised what we have in the community, just in our mom and pop stores, and keep that money out of the big box stores if you can. So that's my little spiel on that. I did participate on Sunday, and I know other members of council did, and the mayor too, with the 18 Wheels of Christmas, that was at Co-op, and that truck's getting pretty full, but I know we can fill it. So it will be at Safeway on November 24th, so come down, support them, and we shouldn't have anybody hungry in our community. So good on Rosinow for bringing that truck here again for the seventh year, and I think in total they've been doing it 11 years throughout different communities. So that's kind of all I had, and again, shop local, please, please, please.
Thank you councillor Wilbur. Anything else, any other councillor business? Thank you. So we have our minutes of, I'm going to go through all four or five of them and then we'll just endorse them all at once with one motion. So our minutes of our October 22nd public hearing, our second public hearing on October 22nd. Then our minutes of our regular council meeting on October 22nd. Minutes of our special meeting of council on October 30th, as well as the inaugural meeting of council on November 5th. So if I can have a motion for those five minutes, councillor Wilbur seconded, councillor Javecov, any errors or omissions in any of the minutes? Ready for the question, all in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. Is there any business arising out of any of the minutes for anyone? Correspondent, 6.1, we have a letter from Karen Mason Bennett, Executive Director of Northern Environmental Action Team. Councillor Javecov?
Received for information.
Second. Councillor Parslow, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. 6.3, we have a letter from Dale Rose, Chartered Professional Accountant from Sanders, Rosemont, Grindell regarding our interim audit. Councillor Parslow?
Received this for information.
Thank you, second. Councillor Lextrum?
Certainly.
Discussion?
Just.
Go ahead.
Your Worship, it should be noted, I mean, one of the clauses in here for those that don't have it in front of them is important, although we've received it for information, it also states that we are pleased to advise that our audit procedures have revealed no major weaknesses in our internal controls process, and I think that's important for the public too, to hear from our accountants.
Good point. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried, thank you.
Let me get back.
6.4, we have a letter from Scott Sitter, Assessor of BC Assessment regarding a congratulations to our new councillor and an offer for a presentation. And I want to speak to this just very briefly, because last year when we received our assessment role, both the preview and then the final assessment role, I went over, I met with the BC Assessment Regional Assessor, and there was an anomaly in it to me that I didn't understand, and it was on our, there was a news article that said the average residential assessment in Dawson Creek went up by 2.8%, yet our overall assessment went down by 50 million, and that didn't make sense to me in terms of how did that, how could that be? And so within residential assessment, there's three or four different categories. Single-family, strata, multifamily, different types of residential properties are within that role, and it was the single-family that went up a bit, but the larger decline in assessment came from those multifamily strata. And so that was an interesting bit of information for me, because when you're looking at how we set our tax rates, and we do it on, based on residential, business, commercial, the different categories and different classes, so I really think it's worthwhile for us, as we've now seen the preview assessment role, to invite BC Assessment in at some point, perhaps in January when we get the final assessment, just so we can have that conversation with them, because that assessment is a big part of exactly what we do as councils. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that and speak to that briefly when I saw this offer, because I'd like to extend that offer to them. So we're looking for a motion on this item.
I would so move that we extend an invitation and have them attend our, be their first or second meeting, whatever fits the schedule in January.
Sure, thank you. Second, councillor Earl, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry, thank you. And our last, item 6.5, we have a letter from Mr. Sandberg, a resident of Dawson Creek, regarding a request for some city signs on the street prior to grading on 108th Avenue. That letter's enclosed, councillor Javecov?
Received for information and discussion.
Thank you. Second, councillor Wilbur, go ahead.
So this here is a common problem that he's describing. I, like, it has been a problem in the past in our street, it's not at this time, but as you drive around the city, there are a lot of places where you see the grader is like weaving through traffic like a snake. I just wondered if it's, to me it seems like a good idea to restrict parking on some of the streets or subdivisions that are, you know, getting snowplowed. Is that realistic to do, or?
Paul, I think we're seeing it every residential area now, whether you've got multifamily, single-family, you're just seeing more and more street parking going on, and I don't know how or what the answer would be. I think honestly, it's, it would equate to a, probably a 15 or 20% efficiency in cost for us to have no street parking during that time, but I don't know how we would do it or how we would implement it. I pass it to administration.
So through Your Worship, exactly, I mean, we use the no parking signs and we enforce, and I don't know that we've actually had to remove vehicles, Kevin can answer that, but we focus in those denser areas and try to, try to ensure that those vehicles are off the roads in the dense neighborhoods. This particular case is a bus stop and
I, I think honestly, it's an, it would equate to a, probably a 15 or 20% efficiency in cost for us to have no street parking during that time, but I don't know how we would do it or how we would implement it. I pass it to administration.
So through your worship, exactly. I mean, we use the no parking signs and we enforce and, and I don't know that we've actually had to remove vehicles. Kevin can answer that. But we focus in those denser areas and try to, try to ensure that those vehicles are off the roads in the dense, dense neighborhoods. This particular case has a bus stop in front of the apartment, which probably contributes to maybe this challenge. But yeah, if we're putting out no parking signs and we're removing traffic, then we need the ability to enforce that and we need somebody enforcing that to remove the vehicles that don't, that don't move. Kevin, any additional comments on this one in particular?
You're correct. Through your worship, this particular street, just at that one end across from the apartment, there is, there is some traffic. And I think Mr. Sandberg's complaint is one, the snow, and two, he has some challenges getting his waste bins out because of the traffic, there's no place to put them out on the street for pickup. So I, I think there's a valid concern there. There's probably a few options we could look at to try and solve that, one, small area.
Go ahead.
So I can see that, you know, if you put out no parking signs, there may be some people that, you know, that still park out there. Well, you could adopt a process that they've given a warning, like on their windshield or whatever, that they will be told, you know, if this persists. But I think it's worthwhile giving it a try, especially in some of these streets that are, you know, it's hardly worth taking a grader down there when you look at what's, what's still there for snowplowing.
So the logistics of operationally, that would mean we would have a crews going ahead of the plows to put the signs up, as well as to be there when they're clearing, to either post the vehicles or remove them after one or two warnings. So that's going to be an added cost into our snow removal, I'm seeing.
So, you know, that could be mitigated with the, you know, the, the efficiency of snowplowing as well.
Councillor Wilber then, Councillor Parslow?
Two things. So through you to stop, did you say there was a bus stop in front of? So there should be no parking there anyways?
Across the street.
Oh, across the street. So I'm wondering if maybe it's just more feasible that there's just no parking there in the winter and we just put up a couple no parking signs so they don't park there? If we're having problems putting out garbage cans and bins?
I think the problem is they move across the road in front of his place, if I understand it correctly. And then he gets plowed in, right?
Okay, well, it's a bus stop. My other, my other question is, we had an app where we could see where the graders were, where the crews are, where, are we still using that app?
Your worship, it's available on our website, GPS, yeah.
Just our vehicles, just our city equipped vehicles, when we hire equipment, they're not on the live map, right?
Right, so, but what I'm wondering is through that app, could we maybe not start some sort of a social media campaign saying, you know, it's snowed, we're going to be in this area and maybe we can get people sharing it that way so people are more aware that, hey, your road could be plowed today? Because I know, I live on a street that goes nowhere and my section is, no one parks on the road, it's cleared. And the next block, they don't, literally don't plow it because everybody's parked on the street and you couldn't, you can't even get a car down there, never mind the grader. So maybe there's just, through some social media awareness or something, that we can just let people know, look, it snowed and we're in this area of town this week or, you know, the next couple of days and hopefully people move their vehicles. I mean, we have roads that don't have front driveways, that's reality.
So I'll go Duncan first and then go back to Councillor Parslow.
Sorry, and just through your worship, all I was going to add is this is, we have received a complaint previously. This is something we can look at. We're, we're monitoring and managing this throughout the community in a number of different neighborhoods and I don't know that there's an answer right today, but we can, we can specifically focus on this area during the next snowfall and see the extent of the problem and deal with it.
And I, and we are reviewing policy and so the snow removal policy is one that I think really is going to need some review, right? It's been the same now for a number of years and, and we experience this every major snowfall event and we got our graders out there trying to maneuver around and. Councillor Parslow?
There's a paragraph here, just a couple, a one-sentence paragraph that reads, "This has been a problem for years. I have spoken to city employees numerous times with absolutely no results." And I heard Kevin say, just a few minutes ago, that there are some options. Was the options as it relates to Mr. Sandberg's situation or was it general?
So through your worship, I mean, it can be general, but in Mr. Sandberg's case, we can put out temporary signs for that one block where it appears to be a problem in advance to see if there was parking. We can put up permanent signage that will eliminate parking year-round or there's a number of things that we can look at. And I think if we, you know, the next snowfall like Duncan spoke to, probably the first thing we do is we put out some temporary signage for that one block, see if that seems to alleviate issues.
Because this, this problem is widespread, as has been alluded to, is not helped by all these rooming houses that we have. So it does require some, maybe broader application than just Mr. Sandberg's, but it's not an easy thing to fix. I do know that part of the problem, as has been raised before, is emergency vehicle access through some of our streets. And I know some communities in the north do not allow recreational vehicles and trailers to be parked on the roads at any time of the year. But that's, so I think we need a broad approach to dealing with this. This is one, one expression of the problem, but there's many other problems, some of it tied into this rooming house suites, secondary suite policy that we're going to be looking at. Because Mr., another thing that's, that strikes me with this particular letter, not just because I know the individual, but we, we try to encourage and help seniors to stay in their homes and we have this occurrence where he has the impression that his neighbors don't even care and that really upsets me.
Thank you. Councillor Lechterman and Councillor Jevakov?
Just following through on that and following through on Councillor Parslow. Through your worship to administration, as we look at this, and I know the corner well, I know where this area is, we do have other areas of concern as have been expressed. And I'll use 15th to 17th Street, 95th and 96th. You know, as we plow those, we're in and out of the vehicles and I would think it's as big a concern for the public that live there, they come out and they see we plow and they go, darn, if I knew that, I might have parked somewhere else. I think that occurs sometimes. So as we look at this, I would encourage us, there's probably a handful, Kevin, that you would know off the top that are concerns for us. Maybe a report that reflects that and with the cost. I mean, that's something we have to look at as well. But that, and as well, I'll throw this in, although we're dealing with this letter, the other one that comes to mind a lot is people, when they're shoveling their driveways and so on, I encourage that, but don't push it out into the middle of the road. I mean, there's just nothing worse in, in my mind than that. You know, it's not the city's snow, I wish to, you know? It isn't a, a matter of, I'm just going to push it on the street for the city to clean it up. Just shovel it to the side of your driveway so people aren't driving through it and forming ice problems for everybody else.
Thank you for that. Councillor Jevakov?
I prefer the temporary signs as opposed to closing parking for the whole year. But I'm just wondering if we need a motion to get some consideration on this issue.
Okay.
So through, through you, your worship, there's two kind of pieces here that I've heard. One is, is just dealing with this specific neighborhood and the other is looking at the, the community. If you want to review and look at the community, I would suggest maybe looking at your snowplowing policy as a whole and considering that 18 centimeters and how we approach that and, and our notifications. It will impact that if we're looking at a number of areas. If you want to deal with this specifically, you'd have a motion specifically identifying this area and no parking signage during the next event or in the future.
And I think, you know what, I think now that we're, we're into the season, maybe as we've got the plans for reviewing policies, let's get that snow removal policy in front of us as soon as possible so that council can have some discussion about that. Because I see that tailored into our budget delivered, budget discussions, long-term and we should have some input into that as it relates to how and we're going to manage the long-term effects of snow plowing and what the policy should look like and is it the same as what we want today? So I see that, maybe we can do it from that perspective. We deal with Mr. Sandberg, but let's bring that policy back in front of council. Councillor Jevakov?
I'll make the motion then regarding Mr. Sandberg's issue that we use temporary no parking signs.
Thank you. Second. Councillor Wilber, discussion? Administration? Yeah, thank you. Any further discussion on that motion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carried? I'll talk to administration and we'll get the, I'll find a way to get the snow removal policy back on as soon as I can with Brenda. Thank you. Item seven, reports. First, 7.1, we have a memo from a corporate officer regarding the conservation agreement for the Southern Mountain Caribou and this relates to the letters that we had agreed to send out on behalf of the city with other folks. And so we're looking for a motion to support that at this point. Councillor Parslow?
There's a, a motion here written by the corporate officer. I'd like to move that the memo from the corporate officer, resection 11 conservation agreement for Southern Mountain Caribou received. Further, the decision to request the premier and the provincial ministers involved in the Caribou file to arrange for an immediate meeting with all of the northern and interior mayors and regional district chairs be ratified.
Thank you. Seconded, Councillor Lechterman. Discussion? Councillor Lechterman?
Thank you, your worship. And speaking to this issue for the general public, I'm not sure it's a well-known fact out there that this has significant importance to our entire region and our entire province. It is about trying to save the mountain caribou and without question, I think most people would be in favor of that. There is a potential to impact our communities with the impact being hundreds of families supporting jobs, hundreds upon hundreds. So I think the issue is not that we don't want to save the caribou, but when a government moves forward, whether it be the federal or provincial government, they've engaged with First Nations in discussions, they have now engaged with industry in discussions, but they have not engaged with any of the locally elected councils in the region. And I'll speak to the northeast. This is one of the most devastating impacts we could potentially see if they make a decision that sterilizes a large portion of the land base for either our forest industry, LP could be impacted, whether it be West Fraser or Canfor and our neighboring communities, could be mining, it could be oil and gas, which is our lifeline. I've never supported industry at any cost in impacting our environment, but everything we do leaves a footprint on this earth. We have to find the right balance. Where they're moving with the caribou is of significant concern to myself and I want the public to, to at least know what this issue is about. Because many times we hear about governments talking about issues and to be honest, we're so busy in our day-to-day lives, unless there's a direct impact on an individual, it goes by them. So this is one of the most important issues we will see in this region in many, many years and I wholeheartedly support the motion. And, you know, the word demand, I think, is something they have to understand. They have to come to the table and meet with the locally elected members of this region to tell us what their plan really is, because nobody knows at this point.
Thank you. When, when we got the first kind of indication of this was in earlier this spring, in March timeframe probably, and so we organized a group of the South Peaches mayors, the electoral area directors, we went down to Victoria, we met with Minister Donaldson, Forest Lines and Natural Resource Operations, said, listen, we understand, you're working on this Southern Mountain Caribou, it's going to have some impacts on, as Blair's indicated, on our communities, our regions. We want to be at the table in regards to the socioeconomic impacts to our communities and our region as a result of some of the decisions we were understanding and are moving forward with. So I want to explain that because the federal ministry, under the Species at Risk Act, has the jurisdiction to protect the habitat of any species at risk. And the species, Southern Mountain Caribou are not a species at risk, but they're threatened and some of the herds are more so than others. And so if they protect the area, if they put the, protect the habitat of the area, nothing goes on in there, as Councillor Lechterman's indicated. No industrial activity, no tourism, the geoparks, the snowmobilers, the cattlemen in there may have crowned leases in there for grazing. Our watershed, the Bear Hole Lake, is in Quintet herd area. So it has big, big time impacts and we got the minister's commitment that he would continue to involve us. We're not sure that that's, as Councillor Lechterman's indicated, and so this letter writing campaign and this push by all of us in northern British Columbia, from Prince George, west, northeast, interior, all of us are working together on it. And so we're, and we're really working and pushing from that perspective to try to get an understanding of what they're doing, what they're going to do and give us the opportunity to have some input. So it has a, it is a big deal, it is a significant issue. And so we, I, the letters were going out and that's why we wanted to make sure we got council's approval to support it. Councillor Wilber?
I'm thinking, you kind of touched on, I was going to add ranching, agriculture and, and tourism, because those are huge and affect greatly our province. But I just wanted to add to that, just heads up to your, to yourself and to my colleagues. NCLGA adjusted their timeline this year to add the Friday so that the ministers and MLAs could attend on Friday. And Friday has been set aside to specifically talk to the minister and to get feedback to the members of NCLJ on this particular issue. So there's actually, they've set aside six hours to do drop-in and also group session for them to give us feedback. Because one thing, we're writing letters, we're pushing, we're demanding, we're saying what's going on, but we're getting no follow-up or feedback from the provincial government. And whether we like it or not, they are working on this and we don't know what they're doing and we don't know what the conversation is at the federal level. So I would just encourage anyone that's at NCLJ to be there for that Friday, to be in that room with the minister so that we get firsthand response on what, how this is being dealt with.
Thank you. Councillor Parslow then, Councillor Jevakov?
Yes, so this, obviously, I'm not going to reiterate what's already been said, it's a very serious issue. But to just, we've had some productive dialogue with our First Nations partners recently. Has any move been made on your, through you to talk to some of the people we've been meeting with recently about this and where they're coming from? Because the impression I have is they want to engage with the economic activity and prosperity for their people. And I just would like to see if we could maybe make an approach to have some discussion.
Absolutely, and I, I haven't had that discussion with the Soto at all or any of the First Nations. I was there last week again. We've been pushing this initiative from the municipal perspective along with Lyn Hall, the Mayor of Prince George and working with Kofi, Susan Yurkovich and the industry guys. I had a conference call with the LP. So we've been really focusing on trying to get to the province in terms of getting at the table and get an understanding of what they're doing and, and in relation to the section 11 under the Federal SARAH Act of what they're doing, because they're excluding us from that discussion. And that's, we need to absolutely get there. I'm not adverse at all to having those conversations with our First Nations folks about it, but we got to get to the province in terms of who are the ones driving this bus right now.
It seems to me that, you know, we use the mantra, united we are stronger. I, I think if we just engage, then who knows what might about by that and they're influential in these matters with provincial government.
Yeah, absolutely. Councillor Jevakov?
So with the, with the proposal that I guess is on the table, does that mean that our forest operations like LP and West Fraser and Canfor will not access timber? If that's the case, then they're basically shutting down.
So the problem, I think, Councillor Jevakov, that's part of the problem. We're hearing kind of these rumors that there's these arrangements or deals being made, but we don't know what the details of them are. So if they restrict access and they close down the access to the fiber that Canfor, West Fraser, Conifex, LP have, that has a big time impact on the industry. If they impact Kanuma or HD and Tumbler Ridge and the Quintet areas, then that has a big impact on the mining. The problem is, we're only hearing about it kind of by, on the side about some discussion or some rumor that there's, there's deals being made, but the province won't engage with us and tell us what they're doing and that's the problem. So we're trying to get this initiative with all of the northern communities and regional directors to get to the province and get a meeting with the premier and get a meeting with the cabinet to say, what are, what is being done? We understand the SARAH, but the socioeconomic components and concerns we have for our region and our communities are significant and they're not engaging. So that's the letter writing campaign and I just talked to Lyn last week, Hall in Prince George, and I know that they were reaching back through to try to arrange that. And I know that the regional district, we're having a conference call this morning about it as well, following it up. So it's, it's definitely got the attention that it's trying to push it forward, it's just, we're can't, we're having struggle in trying to get the problem. Councillor Earl?
One quick follow-up to Councillor Parslow's question. In addition to engaging with our First Nations neighbors throughout the community, we recently had an opportunity to meet the new mayors and council in our neighboring communities in Tumbler Ridge and Chetwind. Is your sense from, I, I don't know to what degree you've been able to speak to them about this issue, is your sense that they're, they remain on the same page as the previous mayor and council in those communities? and council in those communities? Or how's that process shaking out with the new administration?
Yeah, so the mayors of Tumbler Ridge and Chetwind, newly elected along with the, just at transition times from Mayor Nichols and Mayor McPherson, the four of them were in Victoria, met with deputy ministers, et cetera. So I think they were all in there trying to get to cabinet. And it's really a cohesive drive going on right now by the Peace River Regional District. So that's all of us in northeastern British Columbia, as well as the Northern Rockies are in it. So it's got, everybody's, everybody's involved in it. We just can't get the attention of the province. Thank you. Thank you for that. On the motion to support the letter, all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Reports 18-192 from the energy manager regarding free transit for Christmas in Dawson Creek and idle last week in Dawson Creek.
I have to claim conflict, your worship.
Go ahead. Counselor Parslow.
Remove the report number 18-192 from the energy manager re-free BC transit for Christmas in Dawson Creek and idle last week in Dawson Creek be received. Further, the council approves free transit bus and services from November 24th to November 30th, 2018.
Thank you. Second. Counselor Urquhart, are you seconding?
Sure.
Thank you. Discussion. Counselor Javecov and Counselor Lechter.
I'll be voting against it. I, with the, with the, considering our financial situation, I don't think we should be precluding any revenue. The other thing is that a lot of bus users have passes and so they're not benefiting from this anyways. So I'll be voting against it.
Thank you. Counselor Lechter.
Speaking to the issue, do we have the numbers over the past years that this has been implemented as to the increased ridership? Has it worked well, has it not? What is the cost for that week to the city of Dawson Creek? Do we have those at hand right now before?
So through your worship, there's a couple of ways we've looked at this. So just talking about annual, and I have Peter here and I'll ask him to give the update. But you talk about annual, and we're looking at, I think, through our budget, 97,700 annual usage, right, access. And just based on your 52 weeks, we're looking at about a weekly ridership of 1,800 and change per week. Again, looking at revenues, you're looking at about 2,400 on that annual basis. Now, I know there is some increase and you're looking for numbers particular to that week. And Peter, you can talk a little bit about that, that week in particular?
Yeah, that week in particular, BC Transit doesn't have the stats available at the moment for that particular week. But what they do tell us is that in the winter months, ridership is roughly double. So presumably, revenue would be somewhere approaching double, ridership double those numbers. So winter is a heavy use time of year. School is in during that week, so, and college is in, so there's going to be probably closer to maximum ridership during that time.
Go ahead.
Just following through on that, and I know that we will be getting into budget discussions and so on as the new council moves forward with that. It is this time of year. We've done it historically. What I would like, I will support this motion this year. But I would like further, hopefully, BC Transit can give us the breakdown of what the ridership is in the previous weeks we've done this. I know we can't predetermine what they are this year. But what I would like to know, do we have a 10% increase in ridership? Do we have a 50% increase in ridership for the free week? Not for the winter months? Because I think winter months, I'm glad we see people utilizing that service. But to be honest, it's a costly service for the city of Dawson Creek. What do we, we want to make sure the benefits that the taxpayers are seeing for both those that use it and don't use it, see the benefit to their communities. So I'll support the motion, but I will be looking for information based on the ridership per week when we have looked at this previously, if we could get that. So that when the taxpayer asks us, you know, how did it work? Did you get a 5% increase? Did you get a 3% or a 30%? I just don't know at this point. But it's something we've done in the past. They will support it this year, but I would like those numbers put before us if we could. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? So I'm going to speak in favor as well. I, so for me, the, the cost of providing transit for our community is probably 600, 700,000 net for us. And we always struggle with that low ridership. And every year we look at it and say 10 or 12 or 14% ridership is what we seem to achieve. And so it's an expensive service that we offer in our community for, most of the time for students and for those that are less able to afford their own transportation. And so anything, to me, anything we can use as, as a way to encourage more people traveling on the buses utilizing the service maybe increases the usage of it in the long-term for us, which would be a good thing. And the other thing is supporting our local businesses and hopefully we have people that are going to ride it during that timeframe, do some shopping locally. So I also want to support it. But it's a, it's a costly service for our community. Counselor Earl.
Just one follow-up question. Kind of goes to Paul and Blair's point. So as somebody who is very well acquainted with public transit when I was in college, most people who use it regularly as part of their day-to-day life buy month passes, correct? Would you say? So to what extent to those people, the ones who are already, are they benefiting at all when they buy a month pass and there's a week free in the middle of that month? Or are they basically just? No?
Doctor?
So through your worship, I understand, and Peter will have to confirm this, that we don't, we don't provide money back for monthly pass holders. So they wouldn't receive the benefit if somebody riding it on a, on a daily or weekly basis.
Thank you. Counselor Javecov.
Just wanted to confirm what our, what it costs us per rider. It seemed to me that I heard $14.50. Is that correct? Or is that, am I out of lunch?
I honestly.
I don't have the subsidy. I know there's some stats, sorry, through your worship, there's some stats in the, in Flavia's budget assumptions report based on some revenue and some subsidy. And we could do some quick math to that 97,700 ridership. But not right this second, I'm sorry. But I can get that for you on a break.
Counselor Parslow.
Sometimes Counselor Javecov makes some wild statements.
No, wait, wait, wait.
He's not, he's not so far out on this particular one. And I'm not going to mention the subsidy per passenger flying on the airplane out of Dawson Creek at this moment.
Thank you for the discussion. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Counselor Javecov opposed. 7.3, we have, Counselor, can we get Counselor Wilbur?
She's hit.
7.3, we have report 18-182 from the city planner regarding cannabis store license and development variance permit 1802 for unit 31040 Alaska Avenue, Clarity Cannabis. Counselor Javecov.
I move that report number 18-182 from the city planner re-non-medical cannabis retail store license and development variance permit 18-02 for number three at 1040 Alaska Avenue be received. Further, that the development variance permit 18-02 be approved to reduce the minimum distance between a cannabis retail store and a park from 150 meters to 132.5 meters. And further, that the liquor and cannabis regulation branch be advised that council has considered the location of the proposed store and general impact on the community if the application is approved. Further, that a result, further, that as a result of various methods being used to obtain views of the public and one being received which recommended approval of the application, it is assumed that there are no concerns with the non-medical cannabis retail store license and therefore council recommends the issuance of the license.
Thank you. Second. Counselor Parslow, discussion. Counselor Wilbur.
Through you, just, just because I had asked, I did have concerns that right out of the gate, we're offering variances. But just to confirm, it's my understanding that if the door of this facility was actually on the other side, they wouldn't need the variance. So really, it's just a matter of entrance and exit location.
So through your worship, a portion of this building, which is the old video update, I guess I'll call it, or it's the old Menchus location, a portion of this building, in particular, the, the west, I guess, would be within the 150 and the east is not. Further, I would comment, when we were originally setting up the bylaws, and this is kind of our first, our first run-through, we were looking at that 150-meter buffer between stores, but also from playgrounds and sports fields and, and parks and places where children commonly gathered. NAR Park was captured as it is a designated park, but maybe, you know, looking at it today doesn't fit necessarily within that original intent that the province also laid out with children congregating.
Counselor Javecov.
It just seems appropriate to me to go from Menchus Frogs and Yogurt to cannabis in a store.
Snacks and pizza plates.
Could you help me with Counselor Javecov?
I don't know. I'm not going there.
I don't have any further options.
Further discussion on the motion? I agree. I think honestly, when we did the consideration and all of the great work I think that staff did and getting the input, seeking the feedback, I don't consider NAR Park in my mind when we're talking about parks, that was a park where children were playing. That NAR Park isn't a park that I would view in that same view as I would Newby Park or another park where there are kids and children accessing it on a regular basis. And certainly the variance of, as was I mentioned, if it was on the east side of the complex, then it would be outside. So I think it's completely appropriate. It's the location where I would have envisioned there would be a dispensary if the legalization occurred, and it has. And so I'm completely in support of this. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. 7.5, we have report number 18-183 from the Parks and Facilities Manager regarding the relocation of the Encana Events Center dry floor retrofit budget.
7.4, your worship.
I don't want to do 7.4. I want to.
Well, it's up to you if you'd like to.
See the gallery. 7.4, we have report number 18-189 from the Deputy Corporate Officer regarding the non-medical cannabis retail store license for number 19110008 Street Starbucks. Counselor Earl.
Thank you. I move that report number 11-189 from the Deputy Corporate Officer regarding non-medical cannabis retail store license 1139543 BC Limited at number 1911008 Street, quote-unquote Starbucks be received. Further, that the liquor and cannabis regulation branch be advised that council has considered the location of the proposed store and general impact on the community if the application is approved. Further, that as a result of various methods being used to obtain views of the public and no comments being received in opposition to the application, it is assumed that there are no concerns with the non-medical cannabis retail store license and therefore council recommends the issuance of the license.
Thank you. Second, Counselor Wilbur, discussion? Questions, comments? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. 7.6.
Okay, you're confusing. Counselor Javecov over here.
You're making him switch back between pages unnecessarily.
Would you like my glasses, your worship?
7.5, we have report 18-183 from the Parks and Facilities Manager regarding the reallocation of the Encana Events Under Dry Floor retrofit budget. Counselor Wilbur.
It pains me, but I will move that report number 18-183 from the Parks and Facilities Manager. Re-reallocation of the Encana Events Center dry floor retrofit budget be received. Further, the council reallocate $350,000 from the carry-forward dry floor retrofit project in order to purchase and replace the Encana Events Center score clock and video display screen and necessary wiring upgrades.
Thank you. Second. Counselor Earl, discussion. So I'll go Counselor Javecov, Counselor Lechter, Counselor Wilbur.
So I'm not in favor of this recommendation. I think that, you know, if that money isn't required for the floor, it should be retained in the budget and carried forward to next year's budget. And if there is a need for, to replace the clock and video display, that should be a new item, budget item that we should be dealing with in this current budget. So I'll be voting against that recommendation.
Thank you. Counselor Lechter.
Just following through and looking for possibly a little information. The dry floor retrofit, I'm guessing, and I have to assume because it was previous council that went forward with this, had some order of business brought forward as to why it was considered? What were the benefits to the city? What was the usage going to be? Was there increased rental of the facility? Could I just get a quick update on that, if I could, please?
So in our previous negotiations with the renewal of the contract with Global or Spectra for Encana Events Center, it was felt that we should have more public good, public use of the facility for public events for, on behalf of the community and community groups, have more access to the Encana Events Center. And one of those was if we had a multi-use floor, that multi-use floor that we could install and use for volleyball, basketball, different types of events, indoor soccer, that we could perhaps make it more available for other uses, uses in the community. But what we found is that with, with the events and the hockey and the ice, it's, and the cost of installing, tearing it down, it's not an easy process for that to occur. And so we haven't moved forward with that purchase of that multi-use floor from, from those perspectives. Duncan?
Yes, through your worship, exactly, there were a number of strategies to try and reduce the dark days in the facility and, and make it more of a community use, community-based, and get that, that regular usage. The original intent was we would have that ability to relocate our volleyball Tuesday and Friday programs to the event center and have those 250, 500 people between the two days flowing through that facility. As we progressed, we were very successful in, in eliminating many of those dark days, which limited that continuity and that continuous use. And there was a concern that if we relocated our programs there, we may also lose some of the other spaces that we used and wouldn't have those if, for instance, there was an event. So it kind of started down that track. And then we moved into the event tourism discussion last year and, and looking at that facility and looking at the types of uses through event tourism and that economic development side of things. And we did the sport tourism economic assessment model, STEAM model, and looked at some of the previous events and some of the current events hosted in the city. And, and there was a, a bit of a business case to say that there is an economic development through, whether it's a hockey event or a curling event or a exhibition association. And as we moved down that road, determined before we jump forward and purchase the floor in 2017, we better understand what type of floor we need and what type of events we're going to be looking for. And so that, that's really how we got to where we are today as far as why that floor was considered and, and what that use would be in the future. And I think I highlighted, or Levi highlighted it in the report, we really moved into a hosting of, of events and another provincial or regional or some of those local tournaments or playoffs or provincial type of event model.
Go ahead.
If I could just follow through your worship. Thank you, Duncan, for that. The motion is to reallocate $350,000. The price of a new clock, I guess the age of the old clock concerns me that it's already shot. Is there a life expectancy to these clocks? Did we get one that maybe just was a bad install from the, I'm just not sure. Just the lifespan of that, of that clock seems a little short to me that here we are, and I'm going to guess if I use 10 years, I'm probably off. But getting 10 years out of a $300,000 piece of equipment doesn't make sense to me.
So through your worship, my understanding is it's really sourcing components to repair the clock, right? The clock's 10, 11 years in, in operation. And we really had our challenges here in the fall when we had the national women's team and the clock freezing while they're timing games or while they're operating Pounds and Berry. You were there, maybe you can talk a little bit about the challenges we had.
Yeah, so several times during the, after the second period, third period, we did have freezing. And that's okay in the event of, if it's just an exhibition as we call it. But in the case of a national or international event, you can't have that clock stopping like that, especially in a televised scenario where everything's so critical of the clock. Part of that request is the acceleration of the partnership opportunity that we're dealing with as well. We weren't expecting to get another event until two years down the road, but there will be discussion further of the acceleration of the potential event happening next Christmas.
Do we have, and again, last follow-up, your worship, a general idea of the cost? Is it the 350? Is it 200? Is it 175? Is there going to be funds left at the end of this? Do we have an idea of the clock we may be looking at?
So through your worship, this is, the clock we have. So through your worship, this is, the clock we have now is essentially that base model that provides a screen and score. There's a variety of different types of score clocks, the Memorial and the Kin style versus a style that you see at Rogers Arena. The idea is to get that base model that includes a screen and score keeping abilities. The intent is also to apply on some grants that are available, and the intent is to have money left over at the end of the day. And that's the discussion I had with Mr. Mackay-Bur. This amount would fund that base model clock. They are working on some quotes, but he has guaranteed me that the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be enough to fund that. However, we hope to offset that further and have funding left over.
Do we approve the final clock purchase, or does Spectrum?
Duncan?
So through your worship, through that agreement, they handle capital at that facility. Often council approves that budget, and through their own policies and their own procedures they procure.
Okay, thank you.
So I got Counselor Wilbur, and then Counselor Jevakov.
Thank you. And that's why I did say it pained me when I read out the motion. The floors, I think, were a future aspect that we were looking to have and thought this would be a great addition to the facility. I also think that those users of those floors got together, they probably could fund it themselves. But I think we're, this, for me, when I looked at this and looked through the report was, we have to look after what we have. And we talk about fiscal gap, we talk about all these things, and if we're going to move ahead and plan for this other stuff and not look after what we have, we're just going to run into more problems. Technology changes quickly, especially with electronic signage and scoreboards. The newer stuff, and I'm going to assume that that's what they're looking at, would be LED-based, which has a longer lifespan and works better in the cold. So the colder the facility, the brighter the lights. So I think I'm happy to put the motion forward and support it, and I think I would like to see those floors, I really would. But realistically, I think the user groups that would use it, if they come together, they could find their own grant opportunities and probably have funding available themselves now that they could purchase that for something in the future. But I think it's really vitally important we look after what we have. With the agreement we have with Hockey Canada and the stuff that we're looking at coming forward, we need to have equipment that's working in that facility, or really we're letting down those that we've made an agreement with. So happy to put the motion forward and support it.
Thank you. Counselor Jevakov?
Well, I think the discussion that's been going on, and I thanks Blair for bringing some of those issues up, and I compliment administration for realizing that the floors are, you know, probably not going to be worthwhile in the long run. I guess what bothers me is that we're, you know, a budget process where you say, well, here's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and try and spend less, or, you know, when you go out and look, like, it's kind of open-ended. To me, we've got, it's not an imminent issue, it's not a crisis. We've got three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're not spending on the floors. Let's retain that for next year, put it into next year's budget, and go out and source out what you want for a clock, so that when it comes to budget time, we know what we're talking about. It's not a kind of an open-ended, if it's three hundred and fifty thousand, why not make it a million? Say, here's a million dollars, go out and, you know, see what you can get. Like, that's not the budgeting process that I'm familiar with in my career.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
This was the second thing that I heard at our orientation meeting that upset me.
Who were you angry at at that one?
I was angry at Kevin.
Oh, Kevin, two. Two for Kevin.
You know, I really think that this council needs to have some serious long-term planning around the multiplex. It seems to me every year we are putting in about half a million dollars to cover things that were left out from the original concept because of lack of money. This, though, was largely funded from a grant from the Spirit of B.C., funding that was available. I recognize, you know, that we have certain commitments to honor with Hockey Canada, but it pains me that with this, with often so many things at the multiplex, sure, there may be economic spin-off activity, but it doesn't help the cooperation of the city of Dawson Creek with its bottom line one iota. We're continually having to find money for one thing or another at the multiplex, including the entire multiplex, not just the event center here. I don't think we can continue to operate like this. I think it's certainly a wonderful asset, and I think we really need to look at our paradigm that we have for particularly the event center. The aspiration was to have more feet through the door, that it would be more available for local things, local events, community groups, and this is not a shot at staff one iota either. I admire them very, very much. But I think we, as a council, need to examine our paradigm, our direction we give to the operators of the place. We just can't keep on doing this. So we have to have a clock. In that regard, I reluctantly have to say we need it because we have these commitments. But it seems to me that if we have to have this clock because we have a commitment with Hockey Canada, which I do support, the five-year commitment, and where we share the rewards and we share if there are any losses, why is that just confined to operating? Because there's certain capital outlays that are required to sustain this high level of hockey that is being brought to the community and which, thinking about this community, that's why I support it. I'm not a hockey fan, but I support it because it's important for this community. But why can't we explore the, where there's capital outlay that is going to be primarily used to support some high-level, high-caliber events in this community, that we seek some partnership in those? Because this isn't the only ask. There's another big ask, which was the third thing that Kevin shared with us.
Kev, you had a bad day.
Yes, he had a bad day. The morning was good, the early afternoon was good, and then Kevin came on, he upset me all evening. But on a serious note here, I just wonder, you know, if we can't explore the capital side of some of these things. And I do, this, I just noticed, I really want to talk about the future of the multiplex and how it's, what sort of things happen there. But I'm going to reluctantly have to support this. It upsets me to support it, but I would like to see if we can, see if we can get some support from it, from our partners in the capital outlay.
Thank you. I'm going to exclude Kevin Henderson from all future meetings.
Oh, he's throwing, he's throwing a party out.
Kevin isn't, he doesn't.
It's like dancing in his chair now.
He didn't put his finger on it.
Thank you. Counselor Earl?
So I'm going to speak in support of the motion, and I just want to make a couple of quick points with respect to the floor that was initially proposed and the history going back to the revising the agreement with Spectra. One component of that was the capital, the floor. Another component was creation of position of a special events manager, which has been filled by Judy Kucherik. And her job essentially is to go out into the community and find events that can take place at the event center, and they've done, part of the reason the floor is, would be of limited use moving forward is because that position's been very, very successful in bringing in events that otherwise, whether it's the Wild Sheep Society, the Beef Congress, the SPCA event they had over this weekend, where we're having our Christmas party, the small business dinner. So as you said, with, as that position's grown, the intermittent nature of how local user groups would have access to the facility has increased likewise because the dark days have been reduced. But also, I'd just like to make a point that as somebody who used to sell sponsorships there, that digital screen is useful for more than just keeping score during hockey. It also allows the building, and by extension the city, to leverage more revenue through sponsorships than it would otherwise be able to do because it increases, you know, you have this big screen that everybody's looking at that's visible, that's digital, so there's no signage overhead cost in changing it out, it's just the cost of the graphic and plugging it in. So there is, even though we might not be having a hockey tournament until 2019, there's still some revenue value in that when they have bull riding in December. I know their ability to leverage sponsorship is going to in part be contingent upon the ability to display a company's logo on that screen. So I'm speaking in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Counselor Lextrem?
Just following through on, I think, all good comments. Without question, we need a clock at the facility. I mean, that's, I would not question that or think that we didn't need to spend the money. I'm guessing some work has been done on this already in the sense of looking at what might be available. And in reading the report, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars will cover the full cost of what we need. I accept that. You raised something, Counselor Earl, it's of interest, the sponsorships, for example, on the large screen. If, for instance, there is sponsorship achieved and somebody wants to advertise their business on that, does that revenue through your worship to administration come directly to the city, or does it go to the event center?
So through your worship, the agreement is fairly comprehensive and talks about that marketing, and Counselor Earl is very familiar with that component of it, but essentially it all feeds back in to the Spectra budget. However, at the end of the year, there's some incentives built in and there's some other pieces to the agreement, but any funding that's left over comes back into city surplus. So at the end of the year, all events in, all budget in, all expenses, all revenues in, any surplus funding through the agreement, there's an incentive that a percentage of that Spectra receives, and the remaining comes back to the city.
Maybe just for clarity then, so this could be that we expend three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and somebody else will reap more benefit than the city? Is that a possibility, another company, being Spectrum?
Through your worship, that's the incentive-based agreement, is they get a percentage of any surplus at the end of the year. I don't know, and I'd have to look back, that there's ever been a surplus in excess of three hundred or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I believe there has been years, I looked at it recently, where there's been a hundred thousand dollar surplus transferred back to the city.
Okay. I mean, and that will be another discussion we have. I understand, and again, I know we're early, we're coming in as a new council, we've got a lot of budget discussions to do. This has been moved before us because of the timeliness. I'm going to accept the issue that we've got some pretty incredible things happening out there, I'll support it. But I do think we have to have that discussion as well. If the city is going to expend three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of capital money, I would like to think that if there's revenue generated from that, that we would see the first portion, maybe not the full three fifty, but set a number on that, that we would realize that benefit through that contract prior to someone operating the facility, getting that benefit if our taxpayers have invested the dollars, so.
Counselor Wilbur, then Counselor Jevakov? And we're getting close.
Yeah, just through you to staff, it's not incorporated in the motion, but will we need another motion that sets direction that you will look for and apply for any appropriate grants to offset the cost of this clock?
Duncan?
Through your worship of council feels it's important in that messaging and the recommendation, you could amend that, but we will be looking for grants.
Okay.
I'm, we're going to apply to NDIS, we're going to apply to the other organizations for grants to be able to help offset the costs of whatever ultimately the clock costs.
I appreciate that we will, I'm just asking staff if you needed us to set that a concrete direction, that they do that.
Counselor Jevakov?
Just a question, does the condition of the clock now preclude advertising on it? Or is it just the timing part that's haywire?
So through your worship, my understanding is it freezes, I think, the entire image. So advertising, freezing, wouldn't necessarily be an issue unless it was in motion, but my understanding is that the clock freezes, Greg?
Counselor Jeremy, I understand a little more of the term, but it all links into the Jumbotron as well, Counselor. So it freezes, freezes. So if we were doing, there were times when we were doing video replay for the under seventeen's, if we were to show that video in the middle of the feedback from, I call it the brain center, Jeremy in the back, it just froze up. So there's a connection between the clock and the Jumbotron wiring as well.
And if you're up on the walking track, you can kind of go behind the screen and you can look at the component parts of how it's wired up, and it's not really, there's not a screen portion and a clock portion, it's pretty, well...
We're getting into some technicals.
Yeah, we're getting technical.
Anyway, so I'm going to finish off with Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I think that the last thought I have on this piece of equipment is it would be good to find out the, what is a reasonable life expectancy for such equipment and set up a replacement fund so that we don't have to face this. A future council doesn't have to face this in ten years or five years or fifteen years' time, that, you know, we do have it for vehicles and so on. I think we should start doing that sort of practice so that we save money for those things that do have a warranty period and a life expectancy period so that we are budgeting for that in the long term, not a big hit like we're being asked for right now.
Thank you.
That is something for future budget discussion.
Thank you. You ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Counselor Jevakov, approved. At this time, we have the preview assessment roll, and then we're going to get into our budget assumptions. So I think it's a good time to take a break at this point. We'll take a seven, eight-minute break, and we'll be back if you resume. And we finished off with seven point five on our reports. Next item is seven point six. We have report eighteen one eight seven from the Chief Financial Officer regarding our two thousand and nineteen preview assessment roll. So I wouldn't mind if we can have Flavia get a bit of an overview of this first before we have the report to receive it, or whatever council decides to do with it.
Oh.
So Flavia, good morning.
Good morning. So we received it November first, the two thousand and nineteen preview. So this is really a very summarized information that they provide to us. So we don't have the breakdown per row, but based on the summary, they are saying that the total assessment is going to increase by eighteen point five million, where it's concentrated nine point five million in residential, and then another eight point three in commercial. And it's a total increase of about one point one percent. In discussion with them, they said the reason for the increase is really because they are intensified the visit here, the inspectors visiting here, and they are catching up things that they missed in previous years. So some of the updates and upgrades that were not captured in previous years, they are highlighted on this one. So that's the reason for the increase. In addition to that, on the side of commercial properties, what they emphasize is because the economy is picking up, so the new commercial properties are valued and selling higher, especially the ones close to the airport. This is the reason why the assessment on commercial side is also increased. In numbers of row, we kept exactly the same for four thousand seven hundred sixty-two, but you can see a variance between vacant from two eighty-five last year to two sixty-eight, which translated in thirteen new single family and four other additional residences. When we get those updated assessments and apply the same rate of two thousand and eighteen that we used it, we can see an increase of two hundred and three thousand dollars in property tax. But we need to keep in mind, this is a ninety percent information, it's not accurate, we still need to go through the whole process by December, end of December where they break down, they are still reviewing this data. And then, of course, in March, we have the result after the appealing. So right now, when we compare the information that we budgeted for two thousand and nineteen, which was about six hundred and forty thousand versus what B.C. assessment's saying, we are short in about four hundred and twenty-six thousand in property taxes.
Thank you. Does this assess value, does it break down new assessment as well as existing?
Not on this, on the preview. In the preview, they don't. They don't provide, they just provide, read the summary, numbers of folios, and then what's the expected amount.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
I'd like to make the motion. I'd like to move the report number 17-187 from the Chief Financial Officer, re-2019 preview assessment role, we receive for information.
Thank you. Second, Counselor Lecter. Discussion. Any comments or questions for Flavia in regards to the information? Preview, early, great information. Happy to see that we're still, looks like very consistent and the majority of the portfolios and the folios of assessorial. So yeah, we look forward to the process. Thank you, Flavia. Counselor Jevakov?
Can I make a motion as a follow-up to the previous motion about the clock?
Not yet, because we have a motion on the floor right now.
Oh, sorry.
About the preview assessment. So we're receiving this for information. You ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Sorry, you want to go back?
Yeah, if I could make a follow-up motion there, that once the administration gets, you know, an actual price on the clock and the amount of grants that are available and that kind of thing, sort of a final picture that's brought back to council.
Thank you. Second, Counselor Wilber. Discussion. Duncan?
So just through your worship, the last motion essentially transferred the money and directed staff to execute this. So now, my understanding is before we execute anything, you'd like to see all the final numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
Any issues with that?
Just delay in time, it would just be timing. I know, for instance, the first event that the clock, we had hoped that the clock would be, and I guess I can't guarantee that it would have been done, was PBR, we were hoping to have something in place, but if council would like to see those numbers, then we will bring them back.
Counselor Lecter and then Counselor Parslow?
Just so we don't get ourselves in a procedural bind, we've got a motion on the floor as our administrator has just stated. The motion that Counselor Jevakov is in contravention to the main motion, do we not need to bring that motion back?
Yeah.
Put an amendment to the main motion and do it that way so that we can keep our continuity?
Yeah. I was, I was hearing the motion that he was asking for administration to report on what they done, but you want it reported before they do it?
Not necessarily. I would like to know, you know, what we're doing there. I'd like to know that, what the actual cost of the clock is going to be and, you know, what the grants are going to be, if the NDIT is available or, just so we've got some information. The open end, I guess it bothers me about the open-ended budgeting process.
Yeah. So, and I heard the motion that you asked administration to bring back a report on the clock after, but, but what you're saying, and I'm going to get clarification on the motion if I can, just to make sure, because if it is that before they go ahead, then that's, as Counselor Lecter said, that's contrary to the motion that we've approved to give them, transfer the budget to move it ahead. Brenda?
Motion was as Counselor Jevakov indicated, so it would be his clarification you'd be looking for at this moment or?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's my question, actually.
So you're asking the same question?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
Like, I don't understand the, you know, how speedy this has to be. The PBR, I believe, is in two weeks.
Yeah, December 1st.
It's in two weeks, so can you apply for a grant from NDIT that quickly?
No.
Yeah.
No, so I guess that's my concern. And is it realistic, unless you've already got something lined up, is it realistic to have it installed by December 1st? So those timelines, I think, are, you know, are not really the issue, so.
But I, so I just going to, so we have approved the motion for this, and so I guess we need to clarify that in terms of what now we're asking for administration and what you want to have council consider, having had now that motion approved. So I think we've got to clarify that, and if it's an amendment to that motion, I think is what we need to consider, because it can't be, we're asking them, we've approved the motion, council's given that direction, and now we can't do something that's contrary to that, I think. Brenda?
Yeah, the motion that I had was that brought back to council to approve. So that indicates that.
So I would leave it at that then, so.
But it's contrary to the motion, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, so we have a procedure.
Yeah. Go ahead, Brenda.
So the, the motion that was passed previously in this meeting just redirected the funds to, it didn't direct staff to purchase, but that's the current procedure is that in Canada's.
But once, yeah, once we've approved the budget, we've approved the expenditure.
You've, so through your worship, the previous motion transferred the funding in order to purchase a clock and move forward with purchasing the clock. Council didn't request any information back prior to purchasing. This motion, my understanding, is prior to purchasing or moving forward, council received the information and make the decision at that time. Those are, they contradict each other.
Counselor Wilber?
Maybe, I, because I second the motion, I think maybe where Counselor Jevakov and myself are coming from, I would be happy with a report afterwards just to see how much of the 350 was used and how much grant application money was received to purchase that clock. In my mind thinking, something Counselor Parslow had said about planning for the future, so that difference in funding, then council could look at it and say, is this something that we could then put aside somewhere for future planning or replacement of other things in the facility? So for me, I, it's not so much that I want to make the decision on the clock, we need it, that's why I put the motion forward, but I would like to know after, I would like to know the difference. I would like to know how much we contributed of the 350 and how much grant funding was received to purchase that clock and what the difference was. So if there's money sitting there, I would like to know what the amount is, so we can then through budget process plan where we'd like that money to be.
So I want to get it, so we have, I think we have a motion that's.
I'm just asking for, sorry, clarity from.
So we have a motion that's not inappropriate based on the fact that it was contrary to the previous motion. So what I'm looking for, before we go any further, is to have a motion that, or an amendment to that motion that gives direction to administration that council wants to proceed with. Brenda?
Yeah, through your worship, what my recommendation would be is that Counselor Jevakov's motion would be out of order, and if any reconsideration of the first motion, that would have to be the way you deal with it.
Right. So we need to have an amendment, if council wishes, on that amendment, on that first motion?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's what I'm looking for, is an amendment to the motion if you're looking.
Not an amendment, but a reconsideration of that motion.
A reconsideration of that original motion? Okay.
It was already voted on.
So only those that voted in favor, no? Anybody can reconsider?
At the same meeting.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
So do we need a reconsideration if we use Shaly's version of the motion, which is just to get a report back?
After. After the purchase.
After the purchase, I don't believe.
Once a motion is moved and seconded, it belongs to your council.
We need to defeat it, make a new motion.
Okay.
That would be the cleanest.
Okay.
All those in favor? Opposed?
What are we voting?
We're voting on the motion that he just put in that was out of order.
Clean motion that doesn't contradict the previous motion.
Do we vote on an out-of-order motion? It's out of order, there's no.
That was one of my recommendations, was that it be out of order, sorry. And the other option put forward was just to defeat the motion and then move forward.
Okay, so now we're going to have the reconsideration of the motion? Is that what you're?
We, if that one's just out of order, it doesn't go anywhere, right? It's just, you're talking about.
No.
Counselor Jevakov's.
It doesn't go anywhere.
It's, yeah.
And so now, so, so now we need to have the motion that's on, that's now part of the board reconsidered?
No.
So, go ahead, Counselor Lecter.
Through your worship and going through and looking for clarity and certainly through administration, I think we have moved and seconded a motion that moved and approved the $350,000 to move forward. What Counselor Jevakov would like and what I've heard discussed here is, we're going to do that this year, but we would like a report back based on, did we use the full $350,000? Did we offset it with 50 or $100,000 in grants? And if so, that money comes back to the city, I'm going to assume that. But that's really what we're looking for, so I would think an amendment to the main motion, we're not changing the intent, the intent is still moving forward with the full transfer. So I think an amendment to the main motion could be in order at this point, which would then stipulate that we would like a full report on the transaction brought back to council. Would that be fair to say?
Yeah, through your worship, it's, whether it's an amendment to that motion or just another.
A new motion, because we've already approved it.
Asking for a report back after.
And usually you got to vote on amendment before you vote on the main motion, right?
Just a secondary motion.
Okay.
I'm prepared to make the secondary motion to have the follow-up report, that's what I would, that's really what I would like to say.
So moving that we ask administration to bring back a report after?
After the clock is purchased and show us any offsets by grants that were achieved in the purchase of the clock in the reader board.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Earl. Discussion. You ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. That was good.
That was convoluted.
I thought the budget was going to be fun.
I noticed it was too bad.
Next.
We should do that more often.
Next item, we have 7.7, we have report 18188 from the Chief, Deputy Chief Financial Officer regarding our third quarter consolidated budget variance report. Counselor Parslow?
I move the report 18188 from the Chief Financial Officer, reconsolidated actual to budget variance report, September 30th, 2018. We receive for information.
Thank you. Second, Counselor Lecter. Discussion. Nothing out of the ordinary for our third quarter report. Duncan?
Through your worship, revenues are up and expenditures are below 75% or through third quarter, so looks good.
Thank you. Ready for a question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. And in report 7.8, we have report number 18185 from our Chief Financial Officer regarding our budget assumption with the accompanying PowerPoint presentation, and so I'm going So the report contains a number of recommendations at the conclusion of it, and so I think it would be appropriate if we have Flavia go through the report, do her presentation, and then we'll move through them sequentially at the conclusion for council's recommendation. Floor is yours.
Thank you. So thank you very much for granting me the opportunity to go through this presentation. So the idea is actually summarized what we have included in this budget assumption. So overall, we're going to discuss it on what's the budget process, the 2019 assumptions for revenue and expenditures, a 2019, 2022 capital plan, also based on the original one, the fiscal gap, and then the strategic meeting that we'd like to come up from this presentation. So an overview about the budget process. Here we are setting seven steps, but as I said in the last meeting, it takes about seven months from this starting point, the kickoff for budget assumption, until we issue the financial plan by law. So the item, this first item, which is the budget schedule and budget assumption approval, which would be in this meeting, and then we have a step two, which would be council providing a list of initiatives or discussions about strategies that we need to follow and use for basis for decision. Then the team, the staff, will be working together to collect information and put those data so that we can present in a series of public meetings about how we're going to proceed, with draft one, draft two, and financial planning meeting. We also need to have a formal public budget consultation, which normally between draft two and then financial plan. And then the final council direction on the budget and also the follow-up from what we get from the public consultation. At the same time, when we issue the financial plan by law, that's the time also we should issue the property tax rate by law. An importance, important thing, information about the whole budget process is the balanced budget. This is a requirement under the Community Charter, Section 165, and it does say that proposed expenditures and transfers for a year must not exceed the total of proposed funding sources and transfers. So what happens when we have a deficit, which means like you would have more expenditures than your revenue? Then in this case, we need to find a way of balancing, and this can be so transfers from reserve, increasing revenues, or decreasing expenditures. So how was the 2018, 2022 budget balanced? So some of the steps that we followed to be able to balance is that we did transfer from accumulated operating surplus, we also transferred from carry-forward capital reserves, portion of the water and sewer infrastructure charge funded operating expenditures, which normally we would be using those infrastructure charts to actually fund capital projects on water and sewer. We also needed to reduce the funding allocation for the PIS River Agreement that we sent to capital. We also deferred some capital projects and we are, it was important to include some increase on property tax following those years, 2019, 4.1, 2020, 3.4, and 21 and 22, 3%. So when we go to that budget, the financial plan projection for five years, we have worked towards those steps to be able to balance the budget. So this is an exercise I did here, seems a lot of numbers, but mainly I got this proposed pamphlet that was provided to the public and to the citizens. So, and I break down there where the money is coming from for revenue purpose, which includes both sources of revenue for operating and capital, and where the money goes to. So it would be capital expenditures and operating expenditures. And what I'm doing, doing a comparison with 2017 actual and then the projections that we have in this financial plan for five years. And then, as you can see at the end, the surplus or deficit before transfer from or to accumulated surplus and reserves. So what is saying there is that in 2017, we transferred 6.6 million from reserves, and then in 2018, we are projecting another 7.9 million transferred from reserves to be able to balance the budget. I will talk in more detail about the 7.9. Budget assumptions and timeline, so 2019 assumptions. So what guides the financial plan? The process starts by using the historical assumption and information included in the previous plan. So that's where, through the report, I provided a lot of information of the original financial plan, because that's the basis for our current years. City staffs prepare the documents and present information to the council for discussions, changes, and approvals. Then we also follow the principles outlined on the city vision, visions, and guiding principle, it's attached to this report, and we work with the information receiver from BC Assessment as a part of the integral diva for setting the annual tax rate. Something important here, that's we depend from information from other organizations, like when we talk about BC Assessment, like we got a temporarily, a preview role early in November, then they're going to come with a whole detail on January 1st about the breakdown of the assessment. And then by the end of March, we are again wait for the revised, the report after all the appealing from the citizens, normally where it drops. For municipal tax rates, we also collected for other government agencies, we depended from them to get the information. And sometimes, like last year, there was a revision on the school tax rate and was on May 4th, and by that time, we are actually having the final discussion for the financial plan and they are issuing a revision of the rate. So let's see how dependable we are on this information. For PIS River Agreement, we normally receive by the middle of February, but we started discussions like early in January and then the reports data, and then the accumulated surplus and reserve available. and then the accumulated surplus and reserve available. This is as a result of the year-end, as the process of the audit goes, by normally middle of February. Revenue disclosure, so as basis for our revenue, we have the Revenue Disclosure Requirement Policy, which we've been following. And the two key points is that it's an integrational process and it's controlled. So integration is that we see as a whole, so maybe an increase on property tax or decreasing property tax is gonna affect another line of your budget. And control is exactly, we depend from other organizations also to take the data. So here is just a breakdown of the main source of revenue comparing 2018 and 2019. Our key sources of revenue is the municipal tax. So it's 29% considered for 2019 versus 2018 of 24, followed by the Peace River Agreement, and then fees and charge. And the idea on this exercise here, you see at the end, transfer from or to reserve. So, oops, sorry. So here, I don't have the little green thing coming out. I lost, okay. So, transfer from or to reserve, where you see 7.9 million. So that represented in 2018, 11% of the source for revenue. Which means we used it from reserve and represented 11% as part of the source for revenue. Where in 2019, based on the projection, there is an expectation that we're gonna be able to send 2.1 million back to reserve. This is just a summary from what we just discussed in the 2019 preview role. And as of today, we have an expectation of 203,000 increase using and assuming the same new rate, but it drops the amount that was originally budgeted for 426,000. We would be short. The Peace River Agreement, so the Peace River Agreement, there are some, we are very, it's depend on the population increase in each municipality, as well as in boundary, assessment increase for class 2, 4, and 5. In January, we are required to send now to the ministry what we call annual long-term development plan and an annual development plan, ADP. And we've been using as part of reporting this on January, I split off 4th and 6th, which means 40% of the Peace River Agreement would be allocated to operation and 6% to capital, which includes debit servicing. As part of the process for closing the five-year plan last year, where we needed to revise the rate of allocation. So what happened then, in 2018, the split rate was between 47 and 53% operation and capital. And then when you see 2019 towards, it's flipped opposite. Now it's about 59% going to operation and 41% going to capital. And currently, the report presented to the ministry needs to be revising. So one of the things that we mentioned in the report is that council will need to take some decisions about the allocation and how we're gonna report to this on January, so we still have some time. But staff suggested that the split allocation be aligned to the necessary portion required to fund the current year capital expenditures, so it would not be so allocated on, blocked on percentage. We could continue to use the 40-60%, but then we need to find sources to offset the shortfall, which for 2019 is about 2.5 million. And then I can see, we can just keep the same breakdown. Another main source of revenue, fees and charge. So mainly composed by two big sources, the utility one, which water and sewer, which represent 10.2 million for 2019, and then the users' fees and charge is about 3.6 million. In the report, there's a little more detail. We break down more all the different services, B C Transit, airport, breaks down what was represented in five year. But the exercise here was to actually show for those users' fees, how much is this subsidized portion for 2017? Because when it's subsidized, means we are offsetting those with property tax or other revenues. Just a follow-up, on the item Recreation Program, I put 419,000 grants, because we do receive from the Peace River Regional District. But that should split in the same amount between swimming pool fees and arena. But overall, if you see about a 4.2 million total revenue for those items, we subbidize 10 million through property taxes. Regarding to the water service, and we are working towards the rates to increase, because the last rate increase was in 2010, so it's a part of the process we are currently working towards to get a proposed rate. What I'm trying to show here is that with the revenue that we are collecting, which includes infrastructure charts, and if we remove that infrastructure charts and compare with operating expenditure and servicing, debit servicing, we are operating in a deficit. Which means that we are required to use portion of that infrastructure charge that was expected to be used for capital to balance our funding for water. And the same thing with sewer. We got an advantage in sewer in 2017 as actual, because we have some revenue, 1.3 million that came from the reclaimed water, and that actually was transferred to fund this 2018 capital project, which I'll be discussing further later. Other revenues, so what are the other sources of revenue? One of the other sources are the grants, which can be conditional or unconditional. Normally unconditional, like the small community grants with about 500,000 a year, you can allocate it in operating expenditures. Now, when we talk about condition, it's specifically to a project or they set, like the community work gas tax. Until 2024, we're gonna be able to receive some fundings, but they are very specific, only for infrastructure, and that's why we use for roads. There is for the projection of 2019, two grants that was included there from the Airport Capital Assistance Program amounting 5.7 million. That was included just to offset the expected amount of projects. Not necessarily that it's approved or agreed already. So our other source of revenue, that's exactly the transfer from accumulated surplus. So carry-forward of previous year surplus and capital reserves haven't been used as a source of funding in calculating the needed amounts to cover the forecasted spending and to reduce the impact of tax rate change. I'm stating here something that I found in previous report, going back to the previous CFO. So this is not something that just happened. We've been doing that, and one of the reasons exactly to reduce the impact of tax rate change, right, or offsetting and balancing the forecast. Here just, we talk a lot about accumulated surplus, and sometimes if you get the financial auditor report, that's the terminology we use for all the funds. But we break down in a couple of different ways. So when we talk about operating funds, we also break down between general, water, and sewer. And this is the accumulated of years of the day-to-day activities and the surplus or deficit that was resolved from tax revenue, utility fees, and net of operating expenditures and transfers to capital. Then we have the reserved capital specifically for water, general water and sewer. And then normally those are funded, again, by that portion of Peace River Agreement, the infrastructure charge, grants, and then offset by the capital projects that we have for the year. And there are other very unique and specific reserves that we, it's restricted for whatever it was determined, like equipment pool or the statutory reserves. So how should the reserve works? Reserve funds are established by law, and it's on the Community Charter, Section 188. They said that, by law states that the money could be deposited in the reserve funds, which we have been doing. By law states the specified purpose for the reserve fund, how the money can be used. Reserve functions, it looks like, it's like, works like a saving account, really. It's a, you deposit small sum of each year, or you allocate that, and you have a large sum in the few years so that you can use for specific funds, for investing some capitals or one-time activity. Reserves, they can be operating or capital. The operating reserve is typically for contingencies or recurring projects that do not happen every year. We have, for example, here, the reserve for the sick leave for the fire department. So this was set two years ago, and then as we need to use, it's already there. So it's a reserve specific for an operating activity, right? Capital reserve then is typically for specific type of assets, intend to smooth out the funding requirement for significant asset. So you know you're gonna have a significant project in two, three, five years, you start to build up that fund, so then in that time you can use it. Which happened again for us in the last two years in some specific projects, like the reservoir and- Reserves can be treated as an internal borrowing, but needs to be replenished. Which means we are not prohibited to use one reserve, for example, sewer reserve capital to fund general. You can do that through an internal borrowing process, which means you need to pay back that reserve. So that's the exercise. So, one of the things that we'd like to suggest is a creation of a surplus and reserve policy. Where would be setting limits of using for those funds available? Replenish methods of allocation of those reserves for future spending. So during this process, we'll be coming with a proposal for this policy. Here is just an explanation, going back again, that accumulated surplus, breaking down between operating surplus, capital reserves, and statutory, compared to how we kind of used that for 2018. So if you see general funds on the first section and water, the portion that was used was actually to fund capital projects for 2018. And you see sewer, 1.3 million, that was that revenue received in 2017 that then used to finance the 2018 project. Then you go to capital revenue, that you see a portion of that, half a million, was transferred for a specific fund that was created, the Flood Mitigation Reserve Fund. And then the other reserves are also used for the purpose of funding projects. And then, of course, there are some cases where it was refunded again to your capital reserve and having 425 plus because of the transfer of the general side to capital reserve. Now, our key expenditure, operating capital expenditure, what we call translates to service provision and capital investment spending. So for 2019, when we prepared the budget last year, it was forecasted about 2%, and then there are some revision, ended being dropped from 40.9 to, increased from 40.9 to 41.6 million, which is another increase of 1.6%. I highlight the three items that we know is gonna direct affect our original budget for 2019, which is the employer health tax, is an additional 250,000 that we need to top up on the benefit side of the employees. We have a 72,000 request from our CNP to increase the number of few times CPIC clerks. And also the global spectral contract, we'll need to include the employer health tax, which we will get the revised number later. Regarding to 2019-2022 capital plan, we need to keep in mind and take some assumptions in place. One is that the allocating resources from 2018 unfinished project, that we will need to carry over for 2019. And then allocate the research to new projects prioritized by council. So that's part of a whole discussion, draft one, draft two, going through the projects and determine which ones is gonna stay. We definitely need to re-prioritizing the original 2019 project so that the resources are located to maintain infrastructure in area of greatest needs. And of course, allocate the necessary resources from different funds. Upon the approval from council, we are working with urban system, specifically for general capital projects, is a 10-years plan so that we can compare our capital capacity, how much we currently have, versus what we are in need to consider for capital projects in the next 10 years. So we did a first exercise and did some assumptions which included in the report. And if you see right now, we have, we did an exercise without any increase on property tax, so we can have a full picture really of our money available right now. And in 2019, considering P R A allocation portion, some grants that should be allocated, interest on reserve, we have about 4.3 million available for capital projects, for general one. But based on the exercise from urban system, there is an expectation of approximately 8 million that we need to spend. So that means we are off about 3.6 million that we need to find funds. And if we would consider a 1% increase, represents 153,000 in funding. The report also has a dedicated session about fiscal gap, because it's something that has been constantly discussed. So we did a survey back on April and May to the public and the staff to see what are the areas that they believe we should be working on. And based on the report generated, it was identified three key areas that we should be working to try to reduce the fiscal gap, which is exploring the use of development cost charts, expansion of user fees, and change of services and services level, which will be considered through the discussion of the strategic meeting. Here is just an idea about, what is this difference? What's our fiscal gap when we talk about the operating side of the gap? So what I did here, just got what we have originally planned for operating revenue and expenditure, except eliminating the increase of property tax and assuming our current B C Assessment projection. And I included, which is, there's a little more detail on the report, right? The total expected amount to be transferred to capital project, which would be 100% of infrastructure charts, which includes on the revenue, and then 60% of that portion of the Peace River Agreement. We would be short about 4 million, which kind of the reason why we are not able to allocate the 60% of Peace River Agreement because of the balancing of the budget. When we talk about total fiscal gap, because it's something that's like, what is our total fiscal gap? So just think about that, we have in our books as tangible capital assets as of December 31st, this is the audited number, a net book value of 223.5 million in total assets. The total acquired historical cost of those assets are 332.6 million. But this is not the amount of replacement. These are historical amounts. So imagine the projection of that as a replacement cost. And right now, we don't have, we have a series of master plans, right? But we don't have one combined information to tell us what is the cost to replace our tangible capital asset, buildings, sewer structure, water structure. We have different plans, but not a big report or a main report where you can say it's gonna be 1 billion or 500 million, we don't know. So that's something that will be important and is part of an exercise to combine those informations and have them available to measure our full fiscal gap. So as part of the reporting, one of the things that we are asking is to have a strategic planning meeting, to go through some of the key sessions of this report, and also to help us on the determination how we're gonna tackle the issues that we have in front of us. So originally, I put December 5th, but I see that we need to revise the date, and we are open for that revision, right? But, so what the staff is suggesting, that we have this meeting, and we're gonna go through the reports available, and then we would like to discuss strategies too, which includes the review of tax fees and charge rate, additional reviews, revenues opportunities. What would be the short-term and long-term plan that we need to- what would be the short-term and long-term plan that we need to work upon to revise our budget, and also review our current capital plan to see if we're being aligned with what we need. And that's a summary of our budget assumptions. Any questions?
Unless there's questions specific about any tables.
Great job. That was very well done. Questions? Counselor Parzol.
Yes, I'd like to reiterate my thanks as well. Some clarity there. We've talked about fiscal gap for, some of us, for nearly a decade, but we have some figures on this now, so that's very helpful. First of all, want to talk about the fact that there's no point casting blame or what have you about anything. But I know one question that was going to be asked, is asked of me all the time, and I'm not expecting an answer, I'm just flagging it. Question that is asked often is, how did we get to where we are today? That will be asked, and I just, just like to move on after flagging that. The 60-40 split. I believe that we, all that money should go into capital. It will take a long-term period, well, you know, reasonable number of years to move us from this 60-40 to 100, to zero. And that I see is in the long-term strategy. It worries me to death. I mean, I'm a long-term resident here. I mean, some people come here, they get a job, and they advocate for things, but they move on, right? And the residents, the core residents, they're left capping the bag, right? But I, I really believe that this is an external grant that can be removed pretty well at any time, and we operate in a very precarious situation because of it. So I, I'm not going to bother about why it was 53-47 this 2018. That's history, I'm not into that. But I think that in these assumptions, one of the things that we'll have to wrestle with in our strategic planning is 60-40. But my recollection is that 60-40 was a starting point. It was a, it was for, I forget which year, doesn't really matter, that 60-40 resolution was passed. It didn't mean that next year it stays at 60-40, you think the aspiration, it might be 65-35. But Finance Department has done what it has to do to provide a balanced budget, and I appreciate that. But I don't think it's, was the intention of council, it's stay at that level. So the other thing is, it's good thing that's happening, and is the fact that with urban systems, we have a 10-year scoping out of our capital projects. And that will illuminate the expenditure side, and council will be able to make its determination. But one thing that does worry me about this 60-40 split is the fact that even if we are, even if we achieve five years from now, or eight years from now, 100%, zero, we're including debt services in that. And if that old fair share, the Peace Regional Court money goes, the debt doesn't go, we still got to pay for it. And we are paying about $4 million servicing the debt. So that's another big worry for me, because that's a big chunk of money that we have included in that capital side of things, the debt part, which is a big, big slug. There's many questions I have around specifics, but I want to ask it to one thing that I do know that is in our long-term capital, just to illustrate, is the replacement of the fire hall. We have a commitment from the regional district to assist with that project, which is much appreciated. They should do, but it's appreciated nevertheless. Are you, are you scoping that out in this, that we're going to be setting aside any money for that fire hall, or is it still, is that still waiting, this urban systems work?
Okay. So through your worship, there's a table within the, within the report that really shows that, that capital available, and I think Flavia highlighted it was about 4,300, and that's taking away percentages from PRA, it's just talking about money available in 2019 for capital projects. The intent is to use that table and compare that to the 10-year capital plan that we're working with urban systems to develop. And then at that point, after we have our expenditures, we need to have a discussion around strategies. So when we talk about 8 million in 2019, that's not funding reserves, that's not putting money aside for large special projects. That is essentially working on the projects that need to be done in 2019. So 8 million is a, is a good number, but it's not the number that is putting money aside and is actually shifting into a model that builds up sufficient reserves for future projects. So to answer the question, when we get that 10-year capital plan, we will have those expenditures in those given years, and we will be able to target strategies in order to fund them.
Just two quick further questions, if I may.
Yep, go ahead.
So in that, further to that comment, the 500,000 that through council resolution was to be set aside each year for flood mitigation, is that included in this scenario, or is that part of the stuff that you're sending to urban systems?
So through your worship, I haven't looked at the, the final document, but that is a commitment that council has made, so we'll have to ensure that that 500,000 is included in that annually.
Okay. And the last question, there's a, a lot of discussion, I'm sure, on this topic. But one thing I just need clarity on, it was a bit of a surprise in the presentation that was given, the equipment pool money. Now, I just need a bit of clarity on that. My understanding was that we budget each year, an amount of money that is drawn really from the number of hours put on by the various pieces of equipment. So we charge ourselves so that we have a body of money there, so when a grader needs to be replaced, we've got the money set aside. Yet in the presentation, it seemed that we didn't have a pot of money there, we had taken it from general operating surplus. So my lay assumption has always been, okay, we put so many hours on the grader, let's say 200 hours, we charged ourselves 100 dollars, so we've got X number of dollars set aside, and that's sort of in a reserve fund. But I'm hearing now it's not in a reserve fund.
It is.
Is it?
Yes, so through your worship, there is a reserve fund, but it isn't sufficient to fund all of the equipment replacement needed. Similar to water and sewer, it's reached a point where it's now being supplemented through surplus. Correct, Flavia?
Yes, but just to add something, when also we talk about it's, it funds, it comes from the operations, operation side of the expenditure. So you're including an expenditure there to fund this equipment pool. So when you see that, say it's part of the expenditure, it's because you're taking from there and then include on this funds for equipment pool.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Earl?
Thanks. Couple quick questions, so with respect to, and I'm sorry if this has already been detailed, I apologize, but the urban systems report on the 10-year capital, do you have a tentative date for when council can expect that report?
So through your worship, ideally, we will have it for any strategic planning session that we're going to have with council in order to compare some of these numbers. So that's, that's the target date, but I believe it's going to be moved forward, so we're going to be working a little harder to get that done.
And one last one, and this is, sorry if this is a little in the weeds, but I just, for my own edification, from in the where the money comes from table, in 2020 and 2022, there is a pretty drastic drop-off in other revenue to the tune of about 5 or 6 million dollars. I'm just curious as to why that is, and it could just be the fact that I'm a novice at this, and there's a cycle that happens.
Yeah, so what happened is that in the, in this exercise here, there is also grants, potential grants that would be used for capital projects, and so this is not, there is no expectation in 2020. So that's why the drop.
Okay, thank you.
So, go ahead, Counselor Lacson.
All right, well, thank you, your worship, and through you, to Flavia, thank you for an incredibly good report. I think it is laid out very clearly, probably not that it's positive news we would like to hear, but ones as a new council coming in, and I said this earlier when I ran, not sitting at this table when previous decisions were made, it's very difficult to say they were the right or the wrong decisions. But reading the financial report we have before us, certainly page four and five, I think the comments there, and I am going to read them, because I think this is going to be vitally important as we move forward to work with the public of Dawson Creek, that they understand, we have a challenge to balance our budget. It says to avoid a deficit balance to be carried over to the next year's financial plan, the city has been balancing its actual budget by one, transferring funds from accumulated operating surplus, transferring funds from carrying forward capital reserves, reducing the portion of the infrastructure charges, water and sewer, that were originally committed to be transferred to capital projects, they've transferred that to fund operating expenditures, and reducing the portion of the Peace River Agreement or Fair Share Agreement funding committed to being allocated to capital projects over to general, from funding general infrastructure over to operating. You don't have to be an accountant to figure when you read those comments that we've got some challenging decisions ahead of us as a council. We have continuously balanced the budget with money that we didn't bring in, it was surplus revenue that we've been using, it is the fair share agreement in the operations. So when we come to budgeting and strategic planning, as much as any new council or existing council would love to tell you, I'm going to give you more services, I'm going to lower your taxes, there's going to be a stiff reality for the people here to accept the fact that we have got money in our budget that isn't sustainable. And I just say that as a comment so that we can get people thinking about it, because although we're the elected officials here, we operate for the people that elected us. We have an incredible town full of incredible services that I've enjoyed, my family has enjoyed, my grandchildren continue to enjoy. The question in our strategic planning as we move forward is can we continue to afford what we have? I'm not sure we can. And so there's going to be a great deal of debate and discussion as we move forward about the budget of Dawson Creek, with a number of questions, far too many to do today, your worship, I think that's more strategic planning. I do have, I will, having made my comments about this more than a question, I do have a question through to Flavia. You talked about water and sewer self-liquidating utilities, as I understand it by law under the act. You mentioned that we can actually borrow from them and pay back from that fund. Is it a payback the following year that has to occur? Is it a long-term, you can set up long-term borrowing?
Yeah, you can set a long-term borrowing.
You can.
And then return with the interest that debt reserve would be generated, if it would be invested in a specific account.
And we would set the interest rates ourselves?
Yes.
On that? Thank you. More of a comment, your worship, but a concern I think that we have to look at.
Thank you. So we have four or five recommendations, so I'd like to go through them one by one so that we can get them closed off. So the first recommendation is that the 2019 budget timeline be approved as presented, and that's now working through the timelines that we have. Duncan?
So through your worship, there would be an amendment needed if council did want to do that strategic planning and a date inserted.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So the only change is that we, we, instead of having the strategic planning, because of council scheduling, we're going to have to move it to the end of November, which would be next week, and that's the only change right now that I, I'm aware of.
Okay.
Counselor Parzol? Move. With the amended date for the strategic one.
The 2019 budget timelines be approved as presented with the amendment of the strategic planning date.
Thank you. Second, Counselor Wilbur, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Second one is that the 2019 financial plan be based on the principles and values included in the city's vision, mission, and guiding principles documents and other bylaw and policy documents, and that's obviously the budget assumptions have been set on that, on those principles. For now, as we move it forward, right? And then the...
Question for each of you?
Yes, I think we need to move each one of them individually. Thank you. First move, Counselor Parzol. Second? Counselor Wilbur, discussion. Go ahead.
So your worship, through you on that, when I look at that, I certainly think that part of that discussion that we're about to have may lead to some significant changes in that. Now, so by adopting it here today, what does that mean?
So what we're doing today is the budget assumptions, the financial plan that they presented is based on those principles and assumptions. Council's now going to have a strategic session that's going to set out some strategies, and some of that may change the assumptions and the policy as a result of that, but this financial plan that Flavia has presented is based on those assumptions and those policies that currently exist, and we're approving that today, that financial plan as it's presented.
Okay, just for clarity, as long as, and I think I heard you properly, is that we're going to enter into strategic discussions where my personal feeling is there will be substantial changes to what we've seen here, or there needs to be, whether it occurs or not, and this motion in no way will affect that ability to present that.
Yeah, no, we're, we're approving the financial plan that Flavia and administration have presented based on those principles that a council have, that's the only way that they could move it forward, is based on those, right?
Okay.
Counselor Jevakov?
So, so the vision and mission and guiding principles can be modified in our strategic planning session.
Yeah.
The interpretation of some of that stuff is, is pretty open, and, you know, it's, I think like Claire said, we need to have a hard look at that.
Duncan?
So through your worship, the nuts and bolts of the strategic, or of the recommendation is really the strategic planning session and those areas of review as a result are coming from that meeting. There'll be a report to council, both open, and may even include some closed items that will come back to council for that council ratification and council approval, but I don't believe that any discussion you're going to have in that strategic planning session is impacted or limited by any of these resolutions.
For long-term, I'll use an example. So under the strategic planning exercise, we're going to look at long-term targeted strategies. One of those long-term targeted strategies, I think we've all set, is the allocation of PRA funding. That's a policy that's been set. If we set a new direction around that and impacting on our capital plan, then we need to come up with a new direction on our long-term strategy as to how that's going to be funded and what those targets are, and then administration bring back that information to us in the next financial plan with that new direction and new policy as set by council. Thank you. So further discussion on the motion that we're going to, we've adopt the financial plan based on the principles and values that are in our policy documents now. Ready for the question, all in favor? Opposed, carry. That the methodology used in preparing the 2019 financial plan will be based on an integrated and long-term approach in setting tax rates, fees, charges, and service provision. And I think that's part of what you guys are saying now, is that the 2019 plan will be based on this long-term approach. We're going to put some strategies in place for the tax charges, for the rates, additional revenue... charges, for the rates, additional revenue, targeted strategies for short-term as well as long-term strategies and a review of the capital plan. So what we're saying today is that the methodology used in preparing this plan will be based on an integrated long-term approach. Duncan, do you want to?
Chap, through your worship, again, none of this is meant to limit your ability through that strategic planning session to do or not to do something. So the idea is, as you noted, we, we have a five-year plan from 2018, we have to start this budget assumptions from somewhere, we have to, to start the budget process from somewhere, and that's essentially where Flavia has begun developing this information. But again, coming from the strategic planning session, we're going to be looking at tax rates, we're going to be setting some of those areas, and all of that information will come back through public meeting.
In fact, some of that work has already begun, because we've already started the water rate review.
Correct.
As it relates to our long-term rate review for the setting of water rates, which will impact sewer rates, which will impact our ability to build that reserve for that infrastructure and capital, as well as, as you said, Blair, the self-liquidating component of that utility, right? So there's a bit of work that's already underway for that long-term.
Should you move?
Yeah, I need a motion for number three. Counselor Earl, move. Seconded, Counselor Parslau, discussion. Ready for the question, all in favor? Opposed, carry. Now, number four, we had the strategic planning meeting will be out in early December, that was kind of the date that we were looking at, and now we've, as we've done a little bit of a circle around, we've got some conflicts for, some of the councilors are going to be away, so I'd like to suggest that we move that to next week. We'll find a date, we've got to do it next week, because if we don't, Paul's going to be away, then Charlie and Shaly, and, and then we're into Christmas, and then pretty soon, these guys are going to be into their 19 stuff, and we haven't given that long-term stuff. So I think it's of critical importance that we get this done next week, and I hate to put that onto your calendars, but we've got to find a way to prioritize that if we're going to have everybody at the table, and I really want everybody there as this first step in moving this forward. So we'll find a day next week.
Schedule a full day.
We'll schedule a full day. So Duncan and Flavia and I have had some discussion, we're going to facilitate it, we're not going to go out and hire somebody to do this facilitation, we'll lead the conversation. I think there's enough, honestly enough unanimity and consensus around just what we've already talked about in terms of some of that work we need to do, in terms of the long-term strategic approach that we set to this stuff for our rates and capital and PRA and all those things. So I feel very confident that we're going to be able to lead that effectively with you guys and come up to some consensus in terms of moving forward with that, because we, I think we need to get this in front of our administration as soon as possible, because they're going to have to do some work on it for January when we start to move forward into it, and then we'll get into the operating review of that as well, right? So the only change I got is that we'll set this for early November, and there's the four or five key components that we'll look to address next week.
So moved.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Laxton. Any discussion? Thanks for, like I say, we just got to get it done, and we've got to get it in next week to get it finished.
So, in here, you've got taxes and charges, so that's an increase, or it's related to revenue, additional revenue opportunities related to revenue. The 2019 short-term targeted strategies, what does that relate to? Does that relate to revenue or?
Expenditures.
So I think...
Deferring capital projects or?
I think Paul, I kind of, all I got in my head is your, your entire long-term, five-year, 10-year, what we do in that regard, both based on capital and how we fund it. We'll have to put a long-term tax rate structure in place, I think, in terms of what that means. And then when you put that capital lens over it, that impacts your operating, and so that's going to force into that discussion then, a review and a discussion of operating, and then I think that's where council are going to have to give the direction to say, okay, if we need to find an additional $2 million or $3 million bucks to move that PRA money into capital, and that's a long-term strategy that council says we need to have an eight or 12 or $14 million capital program, where does that bill come from? Comes from tax rates, it comes from additional revenue opportunities, and it comes from operating review and perhaps less services. And if those are less services, what are they? And we give that direction to administration to say, you've got to find another $2 million, what are some of the bundles that we're going to look at in order to address that? So that, and I think we're going to, we have to look at it short-term, what's 2019 look like? Because some of the stuff you're going to implement is not going to have an impact on 19, and then the long-term strategy of the five, 10-year out, and how do we then meet that long-term strategy and objectives that council set for capital and PRA and the impact then to operating.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with you. Just one, for where I sit, see 2019 is maybe existing things in our 2018 budget, right? That plus we don't finalize our budget until May, it doesn't mean to say we can't take action to cut things, some things immediately, if that's what's needed.
Yeah, there's some things that are locked into our budget now, as you said, 418, that are approved in 17, 18 now, or them completed capital projects and things. If there's stuff that's in there that we've got to review, then that's part of the 19 short-term targeted strategies, to me, of the discussion we would have. And once we get into that, then the budget deliberations, I think, we've got new councilors, so probably we're going to have to go through it in some detail to, for everybody to be informed and educated and understand what the components are of services if we're making a decision that may impact those services. So, so I, I expect in the night, in January, when we get into it, that we're going to spend some, a couple of hard days sitting here going through it in some detail so that we can have a full understanding and appreciation, and for the benefit of our public, to say, look, there's going to be some impacts here, and how is that going to impact, and what are they, and so we all understand them, to make those informed decisions and engage the community and the public on them. Counselor Parslau?
No, I'm just ready to vote.
Oh, you are ready to vote?
No.
Are you ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed, carry. Thank you. Flavia, again, this is really, you did a great job. I, I think in terms of giving us clarity in terms of the picture was very, very well done, I really appreciate it. Counselor Jevakov?
One of the things that...
You're not making another motion on that clock, are you?
This is just basically a statement. One of the things that we'll be considering, obviously, is increasing taxes or increasing fees or, or that type of thing, which all boils down to the same thing, it's a, it's a draw on the taxpayers. And I, I went through the 2016 census here the other day, just to kind of get an idea of, you know, where we're at with sort of average incomes and that. And the median income for Dawson Creek after taxes is $35,700. So half of the taxpayers, that's median, so half of the taxpayers are getting less than that, and, you know, it has to go down. If you look at seniors that are living on old age security and CPP, and that might be all the income they're getting, they're, they're in the range of $2,000 to $2,500 a When you look at our existing fees, sort of on an average house, an average house, I think, is around $2,000 a year for taxes, and our infrastructure fees amount to about just over $500, so we're looking at just over $2,500 just for taxes and infrastructure fees a year that have to come off of, say, the, you know, a senior or somebody unlimited income, or some of the low, low-income people. On the upper end, you know, the houses up in, in the new part of town there, and you probably know as well as anybody, some of those taxes are like $5,000 a year and more.
Seven years.
So, and then on the other, the other end of it, commercial and industrial are paying three times the rate or more of residential. So we've got a significant tax burden and a fee burden already on taxpayers, and I think we have to keep that in mind when we're, you know, considering tax increases or fees. Like I see a lot of the, the comments and are related to increasing fees and increasing, and, you know, I mean, there's, we have to keep this stuff in mind, the ability to pay.
Well, I mean, so I, every time I present to industry, I've got a slide that I, it's Mrs. Partridge, and it's a senior in our community, and I know her fixed income, and I know her costs of owning the home, still living in her home, and at the end of the month, she's got $300 or $400 left, I know that. And so that's a slide to industry. Why do we, on you guys, about supporting our community and hiring our local businesses? Because then they build a shop, and then they hire local people, and then they're part of our community. We need to make sure we shift that around and ensure we have that support from them. But the other, the other comment I want to make is, and I mentioned earlier, our water and sewer, our water rate review, and that's for everybody in the region, we provide that utility and support to everybody. The rates haven't been looked at in eight, eight years, 2010, so for Puscoopie and our rural residents, we're facing that increase, and that rate review is going to be reflected to everybody. Everybody, we're, we're, we built $8 million worth of water, raw water storage last year to build water security for everybody, and that come from our utility reserves, and so everybody needs to be paying that. The rates are going to go up. And I think that's another example for us of 40% of the $10 million we spend in arts, culture, recreation in our community is solely funded by the residents and the business community of Dawson Creek, and 40% or 50% of the use comes from our rural neighbors. We've got to engage in that, we've got to have some discussion with folks and talk about that and say, that 1967 bylaw that come in for the Centennial Swimming Pool or the subregional requisition, 1967 it come into being for the Centennial Swimming Pool, still the same bylaw today, we get $400,000 for recreation commitment to our community, we've got, we've got to, we've got to get support, but we can't carry it, we cannot carry it all. And I think Flavia's report was an example of that. Thank you. All those in favor? Did we vote on it? We did already, didn't we? Go ahead.
Twice, twice as bad.
See how I got going there?
You did, your worship.
Well, the mayor has every right to go on about it, it's not just, it's not fair.
The other part of that $400,000 is some of this, that money comes originally from the city of Dawson Creek, right? It's not, but this is moving away from our local situation, and it's something I'm just wondering if you or Flavia have any, any notion of the source for it. There was an interesting discussion on CBC, I'm going to say about two weeks ago, and it was a critique really of property tax. And it went something like this, in Vancouver, with millions of dollars of assessment, I think the average assessment must be about $1,004, something like that, the average person in Vancouver, their tax and fees, I don't know what was included in their fees, was about $4,500. Then they went to other communities, the house, let's say, in Kelowna, the average house value in Kelowna might be $700,000, but they ended up paying in taxes and fees not much different than $4,500. Then they moved to somewhere in the north, went to different communities. It was like a constant, it was $4,500 plus or minus a few hundred dollars. I'd love to see where the feat is there, because I have a hunch that notwithstanding what Counselor Jevakov said, our, our people are not paying that. I have a hunch they're paying less. I think we know that for utilities, our neighbor just to the east of us, they're paying double what we are, what our residents have to pay. Now, I respect the, the feedback we got, that people want us to look at services, reduction of services before taxes, but it'd be sure nice to have a good understanding of what this debate was going on in the, on CBC. I, I didn't follow up on it, but it was reference, I have one source I think I'll tap into, because he follows all these things religiously, but the $4,500, I, I did include in my thinking that it was utilities and taxes, because what other, what other things would be common for every household other than those things, you know? I mean, the fact that I'm being charged $1,100 a year to have an annual swim pass is individual, it's not a, a common to every resident. So I would like to, if you have any time to dig in there, I'll contact my person who follows all municipal affairs in, out of Kelowna, and he, he might have some ink into that.
Thank you. We've got to move, because I didn't realize it's noon. So we're going to move to eight bylaws, Lantai bylaw 317, 114th Avenue, by 4397, for consideration of the adoption, this is Gartburg's purchase. Counselor Wilbur? Seconded, Counselor Jevakov. Discussion?
I know we're tight on time.
Yeah, go ahead.
One question, the amount we're selling a floor appears to be because this is a landlocked piece of property by looks of it, the assessed value is so far different than what we're selling it for. Has anybody asked the assessment authorities, this just one that they haven't had the opportunity to look at in the last 10 years or something?
So through your worship, we, we reviewed through the Realtor, and the Realtor provided the estimate, we haven't followed up with BC assessment, but it is landlocked, there is a, an easement that's undeveloped, and there is vehicles and things all over this property and that easement, and as part of this is cleaning that up as well.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, carry. Thank you. And next item, we have 8.2, we have report 18179 from the Deputy Corporate Officer regarding our cannabis and liquor license application policy amendment bylaw, and this is a, Brenda, cleanup of the coordination of the cannabis now into the liquor.
That's correct.
Just coordinating it now that we have cannabis as a legal component. Duncan?
Yeah, and through your worship, this is really ensuring the cannabis follows the same processes as liquor as far as notification and those other pieces.
Motion? Counselor Parslau? Seconded, Counselor Laxton. Discussion? Go ahead.
Again, a quick question, just the $100 fee that goes along with this, I would look to administration, does the $100 fee cover the cost of what it costs our city to put this together?
Duncan?
Through your worship, this fee was included through bylaw in October or September, and that discussion happened, it does not cover those costs, and staff indicated that we need to do a global review of all of those fees, because we are inconsistent, whether it be business licensing or an application fees. It reflects liquor at this point, and, and we need to review both of those fees and the other development fees as well.
So maybe just a quick follow-up, I'm going to assume then that work is underway, because if I hear that if we charge somebody $100, and then it costs us $200 to do that work, the taxpayer subsidizing the application of a business license fee?
Duncan?
That just doesn't seem right.
So through your worship, previous decisions have, have taken into account removing your I tape within communities and a balance of, of those pieces. In this particular case, we need to have a review, and that'll be presented to council, and council will be able to make that decision.
Okay, I look forward to that, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. I'm going to bank through mayor's business as quick as I can. So attended the Chamber of Commerce Rotary Luncheon Association of Producers, were in attendance, gave a presentation, updated on the community in terms of the initiatives and activities that are underway in terms of CAP and their lobbying efforts on behalf of industry and associated activities. It was good, and a good, good turnout by Rotary and Chamber members, and obviously, we all, or most were able to attend the Remembrance Day ceremonies, both at Chega Hall as well as at the Senate House, and appreciate everybody being in attendance and everybody supporting on a really important day. We celebrated the, a week ago Saturday, with the signing of a protocol agreement with the Soto First Nation. It's an agreement built on the foundation or the pillars of health, education, economic opportunities. I think it's a really strong move forward for us in terms of building that relationship with our neighbors and building opportunities that will help us leverage other opportunities, both within our region, but also with the provincial and federal government. And so the agreement says we're going to meet with them twice a year. I really want to go to work on trying to find a way to sign that duplicate agreement in January or February with Soto, and perhaps we'll use that as an opportunity to have our first joint meeting with them, because we committed to two meetings a year, and maybe it's worthwhile to have one in that January, February timeframe, and then again in the fall, maybe in September timeframe, and engage and look for ways that we can benefit in. I know that our local, when I talk to some of our local business guys, they're absolutely looking at leveraging and forging agreements with First Nations neighbors, and the more we can do that and help facilitate that, I think it's of benefit to us, and I know that we got tons of very positive feedback as a result of this initiative. And then that afternoon, we toured with all of the Treaty 8 First Nations... And then that afternoon, we toured with all of the Treaty Eight First Nations that were able to be here and had three of the chiefs, Yehay from Blueberry, Chief Cameron obviously, and Chief Kirk Takosa from Prophet, as well as the other communities. We toured this Southeast Health Society home they're purchasing along with the college. The college was a really interesting tour because it was amazing to me to see the response from the First Nations people, along with Chatwin, Tumblr, Pooz and our Rural Area Director, how people were amazed at what that facility is, what it's offering, and opened up their eyes to the opportunities that are there for training. And I think there's another one where, when we have that first meeting with Soto, that we engage with this, the college and look for opportunities to do that because I think there is another partnership that we can build. The more we build that enrollment at the college, the better it is for industry, better it is for our communities. And so the Treaty Eight guys were obviously very, very pleased with the afternoon and the day that we spent with them. As a result of the, sorry, the water rate review, one of the first things we did was we were going to look at that $1.90 surcharge on non-domestic use. And so we brought that back. The proposal was we were going to put a, the surcharge to apply over a certain volume. Council said they wanted us to meet with the bulk water haulers. And so Scots and Mirage and guys like that. So we had a meeting last week with four or five of them, Kevin and Duncan and I, and talked about what we were doing and why we were wanting to see an increase in the rates for the large commercial users because they put even more pressure on the system than the residential guy out in the community or out in the rural area. So we had a really good discussion with them and they brought in some aspects of they see as some components to it, but also some ideas. They all were agreement that the rates need to be changed and reflective of that. $4.50 a cube for a water in commercial use or non-domestic use in Dawson Creek is $10 a cube and Grantbury and eight or nine and Fort St. John. So we're at $2.90 a cube today. We're way under. And we talk about the rates that were impacting our water utility. I think it's appropriate. So we committed to them. We've had some, Kevin and Duncan and I have had some follow-up discussion. We'll meet again with the raw water or the water haulers and get this one done very quickly because I know the next phase of the water rate review is coming as well. So we had that meeting last week. Counselor Earl and I attended the Dawson Creek Athletic Association AGM the other night last week on Wednesday, I think it was. And really good event again. And all of the various groups gave their presentations on the curling club, the golf club, the Nordic ski and the ski hill, although the ski hills report wasn't.
A little light. It was a little light.
Counselor Jevakov took a pounding. Holy, no, it was good. Anyway, it was really good and it was good.
On a sabbatical.
It was a really good evening and really see how strong the association continues to be and very supportive of the groups. I know the golf club raised the concern for them about the flooding and that is a big issue for them as well. So, and then the awards night that gave Ryan, Mike Baldick and-
Canadian Tire.
Canadian Tire, the Business of the Year Award. And they kind of go unrecognized sometimes, our old friends at Canadian Tire, but they're there just about every time somebody's donating. I was at the Hospital Foundation fundraising event and there was Baldick's had a Canadian Tire. And so I was really happy to see Canadian Tire and Mike and Sandy and Ryan get recognized for their efforts in the community and helping the community. And then Aaron Powell was Coach of the Year and his girls, that volleyball team were given the Team of the Year. And so it was a real nice way to finish off the evening. Attended last week on Thursday a joint meeting with the Peace River Regional District and the Canadian Association of Petroleum Producers, their Energy Policy Group Board. So it's representation of senior folks from the upstream energy companies. And we just had a joint meeting, kind of flow, come from the Farmington Group that's now escalated the profile of the social license component of industry interacting with our rural neighbors and, and how that is impacting. So we talked a little bit about that structure that's being developed and reviewed. And so we sat a luncheon with them and it was an hour, hour and a half. It was really good to have them there. And I know they've committed now, Brad Harold, the Vice President of CAP and Jeff Morrison and that team, and they've committed to even engaging further. We talked about maybe leveraging geoscience, B C, resource works to help put some of that stuff together to help our rural neighbors and people that are impacted by the development, on air monitoring and water and all those things where you could have those companies that are in the business of developing the science of the development of the industry to help give an unbiased, unconflicted sometimes view of what's going on and give some balance to it. So that was a, a good day. We had our town hall meeting on the issue of property crime and the aspect of our downtown businesses getting that rash of break-ins and property damage that was occurring. And good turnout the other night. It was a nasty night for weather and really good turnout. And really appreciated Staff Sergeant Worrell was there and some of the community groups. It's really surprised to me since seeing the lack of kind of volunteers in the community and this COPS Citizens on Patrol Society. They had eight members, I think. Rural Crime Watch seemed to be able to still have their momentum. But anyway, we had a good discussion that night, a good interaction. We gave a little bit of an overview of the challenges we faced in the community over having a real lack of resourcing for us at the police with a whole bunch of vacancies and not being able to fill them. And that's turning around now. And so anyway, I really appreciate the Chamber and Kathleen organizing that with the downtown merchants. And always think it's good for us to be able to get in front of them. Appreciate all of council who were there participating in. We were at, as Counselor Wilbur mentioned earlier, we're at the 18 Wheels of Christmas on Saturday morning. And there's those guys just filling a trailer load of toys and food for those who are in need at this time of the year. It was really a fun, fun day. And I know counselors were there on Saturday and Sunday and a good, it was a good event. I presented back to the Treaty Eight Chiefs again on last Wednesday and I got back in front of them again on our house and the society and this education component. And they're, they really are appreciative of the fact that we're reaching out, that they're engaging in it. They're all interested in it. They see the benefits of it. And so I think the more that we can do this and build this initiative with them and get to the province and get to the federal government, it'll even open up more opportunities for us as it relates to funding and participation in building this infrastructure for health in our community. I was at the Peace Williston Advisory Committee on Friday and that's the Peace Williston Advisory Committee is a committee that was set up by B C Hydro years and years ago on communities that were impacted by the reservoir and continues on. Hydro were there with the board, Chair of the Board was there and CEO and their folks, they give an update on all the initiatives they're working on and the aspects to it. And then communities give input into what initiatives we're working on. I raised the issue of what we faced last fall when we were 17th Street and they built that infrastructure into our community. What a mess that created for 17th Street and some of the businesses. And, you know, I got to Chris O'Reilly and the VP and it was, they, they got on it, right? And they fixed it. And I think that's part of that relationship, the benefits from us having that kind of connection and community. Hydro are really, really worried about reservoir right now in the water level. The water table is going to, they're anticipating it was dry last year. It's going to be a dry, they're anticipating this year it's at about 96%. And they figure if that happens, they're going to be in the reservoir level at about 2147 to 2150 is the elevation. Full is at about 22. So 2147 is the water, that's as low as they're allowed to go and they can't release it then. And that's the battery that provides the power and they're really worried about it this winter. And it's early, but the early forecast, forecast right now is that the water is low and it's going to be low. So that's an issue for them that they're really paying attention to. And I was at the Senior Canucks, their home opener, and they gave us a presentation of a picture of the Canucks with their Koi Cup. I have that and I'll bring that. And on Friday, we're going to raise the Louis Rialde flag. It was supposed to be in, I think, October, but we got it missed. And so we're going to put the flag up for Friday. That's it for the mayor. Questions? Anybody? Counselor Parsl?
Yes, the, when I toured the park and group First Nations Treaty Eight, they appreciated the Treaty Eight flag. But they asked, why don't, why don't you have a B C flag up? And I have no answer to that.
We don't have a pole.
The province has to provide us a little pole.
I think we've only ever had a Canada flag and the city.
Yeah.
I know. I'm, I actually noticed.
It's right there behind the mayor. It's right there behind the mayor.
Any other questions? Comments? Do you want a break for a quick lunch? And then we got committee of the whole? Or do you want to do committee of the whole while we got the staff here?
Let's just go through.
Go.
Go through.
Okay, so diary. Duncan?
Through your worship, as, as noted in the orientation, we are working our way through the O C P. Council will see the zoning updates, zoning bylaw updates in front of council. On December 3rd, we plan on having a one-hour zoning information session just to help council and some of new council and some of previous council understand the zoning process and what it entails. So that'll be on December 3rd.
Thank you.
Nothing else to update your worship?
Consent calendar? Just, Counselor Lechter?
A quick question. This is when we release previous information from in camera, I believe, and so on. So here's a quick one I have, and I'm just going to pull it up because I'm so efficient with this computer. 4.2, I think it's page 168 of the 200. We moved and one of the motions was dealing with 317, 114. I'm just wondering, we just dealt with that in the open meeting before this was released. Have we contradicted ourselves here a bit or should that have been? And I'm just looking for clarification when I read that.
Excuse me, which motion?
So it would be 4.2.
From October 1st?
It is report 18167 from a corporate officer, purchase of 317, 114th Avenue. So, which is good, everything is good there, but we just dealt with the sale prior to doing this being forwarded. Is that just a timing issue we ran into here?
That item was released at the last in-camera meeting and it's, it's put on this meeting's consent calendar, just to make it available to the public. It's already been in the paper advertised as a requirement.
So we released that item as a closed item at the last meeting?
And this is then for information?
Yeah.
This is basically information, no action. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The consent calendar is, all the items in the consent calendar are those just that require no action.
Okay.
Good. Anything further on consent? Motion? Counselor Parsl, seconded. Counselor Lechter. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Strategic priorities?
Nothing to update your worship.
Media? Austin, anything? Thank you. Committee of the whole. 14-1, we have corporate officer. Good morning. Good afternoon.
Hi.
Welcome.
My thank you. There's not really anything more than what's included in my report. I just wanted to really make mention that we do have a new staff member in administration, Melissa Love. She started last week, so we're excited about that. And hopefully have some increased communication efforts because of her hire. That'll be a focus of her position. And just if there's any questions on my report, more in a rush.
Thank you. Any questions for Brenda? Thank you, Brenda. CFO, report from CFO. Good morning. Good afternoon.
So, yeah, I also don't have a lot to add to the report other than like we dedicated a good time the last two weeks working on the budget assumption putting together. And the good news about the interim audit opinion, so that it was no major weakness found during their interim audit. And we are finalizing the water rate review. So that we hope by next council meeting, we're going to be with present. Something. Any other questions?
Thank you, Flavia. General Manager of Community Services?
I have Peter delivering the committee of the whole today.
Thank you. Afternoon, Peter.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity. So today I'm going to talk about a couple of things. So we've got a new curbside recycling program that's been in, in effect since September. It was a new council initiative for 2018. So far it's been, I think on the whole, really successful. We've identified a couple of areas of contamination that have increased from the first week. And as a result, we've engaged to do some audits, curbside audits of the bins of the individual households, particularly in areas where we recognize that there's a noticeable problem. From that, we've had some pretty, pretty remarkable realizations and success, I'd say. We've, so far we've audited 400 homes over two days. We ended up giving out 91 yellow tickets and 24 orange. So a yellow ticket basically tells the resident that there's been something found in your bin that's unauthorized or that's not permitted and explains to them what it is. And the auditors have also made careful note of who they've tagged with the yellow and the orange bins, the orange tags. They've given out 24 of the orange, which basically means your bin can't be collected this week. And they've made a focus to either talk to them that day or to go back and knock on the door and explain to them what it was. Some of the unauthorized things were a bottle of antifreeze. There, there've been, you know, a lot of glass, excessive quantity is another thing that's, that's been a problem. So those are the kinds of things. 78 of those were due to soft plastics, 14 from styrofoam and seven for glass. So by far the, the largest number of people not getting something is, is soft plastics. And they did report that 160 of the 400 achieved full compliance as well. So it's been a successful sort of first, first cut at managing the issue hands-on. And Jeremy at DC Recycling reports that his workload has decreased considerably since they've started. We've asked him for some detailed numbers to quantify that, but all, by all accounts, it seems to be a successful effort to, to manage this. Moving on to energy management, we have a general overall target of reducing our energy intensity. So our facility energy use by 3% a year. And we have a $1.7 million energy budget for B C Hydro and, and natural gas. We've largely met that target year over year, 3%. And really, energy management is delivering infrastructure that pays for itself. The projects have a, under a five-year payback on average and it's been basically a success and a good news story. B C Hydro in and of itself helps to fund the energy management activity as well as providing incentives, incentive money and study money to further produce more savings. And on, even on B C Hydro's side, they, they find a really strong business case for energy efficiency. They pay about a little over two cents a kilowatt hour for efficiency versus well over 10, 10 cents a kilowatt hour for new generation. So really, energy management has taken off, it's spread from B C Hydro to utilities around North America. It's now basically standard fare for utilities to offer, largely as a result of, of the pioneering program and what we've done. And we were sort of, Dawson Creek was in at the ground floor of that and continues to reap the benefits. And then also wanted to talk a little bit about just the B C Transit discussion earlier. We did get some actual numbers in from B C Transit. The number of riders during the week of free transit last year was 3,779. And that turns out to be about 54% higher than the average of the week before and the week after. And the B C Hydro staff person who searched the, the stat wrote in their message that, wow, something must have been happening that week. So clearly it's, it's had the result of boosting ridership and exposure for the transit system. The average per passenger operating cost is $10 per passenger and 10.8% is the operating cost recovery. So those are some of the figures I think council's looking for this morning.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Parsl? Counselor Jevakov?
A couple of questions. So just the last point you made, Peter. The subsidy then, possibly, her ride is $9.
I think, through your worship, I think we can provide some data. There's a 2018 report that has some, some additional information in there. There's also municipal share versus provincial share. There's a couple of different splits. So I think we'll compile, we can compile some of that and we can bring it back and have that accurate.
Okay. The second, last question. The audit that's being conducted on the recycling, what cost, what cost is that? Who's doing it and how's it being paid for?
So the, the audit itself is being conducted by the Northern Environmental Action Team. So the audit itself is being conducted by the Northern Environmental Action Team. They've just finished up conducting similar audits for the City of Fort St. John and have had similar sort of successes in bringing their contamination rates down. The costs of that are roughly, there's probably about a thousand to fifteen-hundred homes that we're going to do and it's costing about a thousand dollars a day to do that and it's probably gonna be about forty-five-hundred dollars by the time it's all said and done in terms of finishing up that audit effort here before end of December.
And that's at the city's cost?
Pardon?
At the city's cost, city of Dawson Creek.
At the city's cost.
Correct.
So I've heard, you know, how contamination is a big problem for many municipalities, it's not just Dawson Creek. So you think, think that's gonna be an annual part of the program? Need to do some spots checking every, so often throughout each year? We have this single-source system?
What, what I think we're seeing is that a lot of residents are getting it, probably eighty, eighty-five percent of the residents just sort of grasp it right away, and it's the ten or the fifteen percent that we're having, are having issues. Most of the people that the auditors have talked to have really been quite eager to learn and open to, to understanding the program details, but may just not have, you know, read the card adequately or understood the program or they're not online in order to download the app or to check, check items on the website. So it's looking, it's looking like this would probably be something that we would need to do at least once a year for the near future, and it's probably not something that we had hoped to do. I think we'd perhaps hope that we would be able to avoid this, this level of engagement, but it seems to be highly effective, perhaps, you know, very highly effective in terms of dollars per hour spent. So it's probably something that we would want to put in for future budgets.
And through your worship, the intent is, at some point, the tipping fee should, should reduce. We haven't really, looking at the numbers Flavia's provided at the landfill for waste, we haven't seen a significant decrease, but we have some, we have seen some decrease in the tonnage that we are taking out through waste. As a result, we assume from recycling, but it isn't the percentage in, or decreases that we had hoped. But with further education, we're hoping we can see some further reduction in tipping fees.
Peace for Regional District, solid waste management. Twenty-five percent of the budget out there is solid waste and that's what we pay. We just allocated three and a half million, I think, or three million dollars to do the second solid bedzoo, just to try to extend that a little longer. So the more that we can do that and the more that we can influence that, the better. We're all paying that, right? That's, that and that.
Councillor Javecov?
Just a question about the sustainability section there. Do we get reimbursed all of the carbon taxes that the city pays in a year?
It's my understanding that it's a hundred percent reimbursement. Flavia, you might be able to, to, to help us with that, but that's been my understanding. Is it, it's a hundred percent, it's, it's, it's the carbon taxes that's levied on what the province considers traditional city services, so it doesn't include RCMP or the airport, things that are outside of the realm of traditional city services.
Councillor Earl?
Just one quick follow-up on the news and notes at the end of the report here. I see a number of initiatives like the Winter Wonderland Public Skate, non-instructional day, day camp, Skate with Santa Public Skate, Free Public Skate, Free Swimming Climb. To what extent are those initiatives being funded exclusively by the City of Dawson Creek? And are there any cost offsets being provided by private sector sponsors like, and just, just curious to see, 'cause I know, I'm sure there's some businesses out there who'd be interested in being, you know, the sponsor of the Winter Wonderland Public Skate. Is there any?
Through your worship, we're always looking at partnerships and have partnered with groups such as the Co-op and the Kinsman and some of those other groups in the past. Some of these initiatives, and I'd have to double-check, I think, come through with your reduced fee days and they're not complete free, free waivers. But for the most part, these are budgeted for or included in our budget. The Free Public Skate is the mayor and council public skate, the Free Swimming Climb is mayor and council swimming climb, and those are kind of your Christmas initiatives. But yeah, we're always looking for partners. So if you're familiar with any partners that would like to contribute, please let us know.
All right. Thank you. Councillor Wilbur? Oh, sorry.
Oh, I actually wanted to add to that, just, and staff can clarify, the actual non-instructional day camps are actually, parents pay to put their children in those camps, they're not free.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
And so just a follow-up with that then, you mentioned staff is, is interested in those opportunities. Is there a person on staff who, part of their job description is to seek those out or to solicit those, or is there more, as these companies approach you? Is there any kind of dedicated component of a staff person's job in seeking out those opportunities?
So really, sorry, through your worship, it depends on, on the department, but for the most part, it's Shante that coordinates most of these partnerships. Sometimes it'll be Malina through the pool, but Shante oversees much of that recreation programming and so it'll be herself or delegate.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Peter, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Fourteen-four, we have a report from our General Manager of Development Services. Kevin, you're not gonna cause trouble with Councillor Parzal, right?
Not today, that was my.
I'd go for a record.
I'm trying to get through this without causing any hard feelings.
No, it's just an upset stomach, it was.
So a few updates. We kind of start off with some projects and kind of where they're at. Drainage update on Seventh and One Hundred and Twenty-Second, if you've been down through the Walmart area, you'll see that that long-awaited drainage project was completed late this fall. Box culvert was put in, so that's, that's complete, done. Trucked waste handling facility is open, running. We're working through some deficiencies and some small problems, but that's, that's moving along. And we have now officially closed the other waste facility, which was over by the waterfill station. So now we've forced everybody to get their contracts in place and if they want to dump their waste, they need to go to the new facility and pay the new rates. So that's, that's ongoing. The South Dawson Water Reservoir, raw water reservoir, right now, we are above one-point-six meters in depth in that reservoir, which equates to about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand cubic meters, which is where we wanted to be for this time of year, so that was kind of our target. So we're now in a spot where infrastructure's protected moving into the winter and we'll continue to fill that reservoir as we go. We're not putting a whole bunch in there every day, but we're carving some off from what we're pumping and it'll continue to fill throughout the winter. The, the new treated water reservoir that was constructed out at the water treatment plant, again, basically all but done. There's a couple of small deficiency items still being dealt with, but no major issues. Water treatment plant expansion and upgrades, that's coming to a close as well. Bear Mountain is just finishing up and I think they expect to be done here sometime in, in December. So that'll have everything online and increase production at the water treatment plant, so that'll be good. The rest of the report, you'll see a bunch of data and information from Public Works as, along with a number of pictures of equipment that we, out of our equipment pool, that we purchased this past year. And one other thing I wanted to bring attention to, you'll see a picture there of a piece of concrete in the middle of grass. You'll probably wonder what that is. That is something that we are moving towards in the cemeteries, which is called a lawn beam or a lawn basin or, at any rate, what it is, is in the new section out at City Cemetery, we're going to be putting these in and this is what we'll be setting headstones on. And what this'll do is ensure a couple of things. One is it'll limit settlement, which is an ongoing maintenance issue for us, and should all but eliminate a potential damage to headstones during any maintenance operations, whether that's mowing or in there when we have to dig another plot. So, yeah, we're excited to get that new, new plots going and, and I think that'll work out quite well. One other thing was the hydrometric stations that were part of the flood mitigation, just as a bit of an update, update, they were installed last week. So we've got four permanent real-time stations and nine temporary water level monitoring throughout the Dawson Creek watershed, so that will start to give us some data as we move forward on flows and depths of the channel. I think the last thing I wanted to touch on, unless there's any questions, was, well, there's two things. One is, I noted that one of the pieces of equipment that we bought was the portable asphalt recycler, which has proved to be a great addition to our, our fleet. I think it's gonna give us a much better product moving forward and I think I noted there, city, we completed just under five hundred patches this past season and based on the contract prices we had with the paving company, after we did eighty by ourselves, we'd already paid for the equipment, so nothing but positive there. The last item was the shared building, regional building inspection agreement that we had with the regional district. They already lost their level-three building inspector and they've not been able to replace them. And seeing that they don't have a level-three, we're not required to be in that agreement because that's really the only, you know, need that we had is a, so we're withdrawing out of that agreement. We're looking to hire another inspector here and if we need any level-three particular expertise, then we'll look to go to local consultant engineering companies or something along those lines, so. Any questions on the report itself?
Councillor Javecov?
I've noticed those new patches work way better than the old patches, so that's awesome.
Yes.
And it's, you know, the fact that they've already paid for themselves is a good deal. Is there any work ongoing right now as a follow-up to our flood mitigation contract with the consultant? Are they doing some work assessing the stream, the creek?
At this point, no, the, the, the next major piece of work will be, if we get that grant, will be that updated flood mapping. So that's, that's the next piece that'll be completed.
When you meet with the water haulers, is it you that meet with the water haulers over the water pricing?
Yeah, myself, Duncan and the mayor.
Yeah, do you include the industrial haulers like Curtis and some of the other guys?
No, because we were talking specifically potable water. This wasn't affected.
They, but they get the surcharge to them for their industrial uses is automatically. What we were trying to capture is some of that commercial stuff that's going on where they're not getting that dollar-ninety surcharge on it to the four-fifty. So that's what the meeting of the water hauler poll was really about, the non, the domestic, non-domestic use and getting that surcharge applied to it, and it's not today.
So is some of the, the commercial, like for industrial camps and that, like these water haulers do all that water, right?
But are they, but they pay the, only charge is a four-fifty on industrial use, right?
Well, I guess they're charged four-fifty because that's the nature of their business.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So they, they don't differentiate.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not certain, so.
They're paying the full four-fifty.
Okay. Then we'll, we'll reach out, I'll reach out to Curtis and Rockwater, those guys that are doing that, just to make sure.
Yeah, if, if indeed they're hauling drinking water in a larger fashion for drinking purposes, then they should be included in the discussion.
Yeah, thanks for that. We'll reach out to them.
Councillor Lechter?
Just a question through you, Kevin, on the part of the sanitary main upgrade on Ninety-Ninth.
Yes.
Seventeenth. So I note in there, there's still some deficiencies that have not yet been corrected and while working with the contractor, staff is planning to complete the priority work necessary in 2019 with the available funds from the project. Is that, why are we doing it and not the contractor? Has he walked away from it or?
The contractor, we've, we've had conversations with them and they are certainly committed to doing it, but they don't have the resources at this particular moment to do it because they're tied up on other work. So we've gone back and forth a number of times and basically it's come down to that they're unable to come and do it within our timeframe, so they're gonna relinquish the money that we're holding for the deficiencies and we'll do the work ourselves.
Would our thought process come in next time we put out a bid and accept a contractor that this isn't acceptable? Wouldn't it be better when we put a contract out to have the contractor that bids it, offers to do the work, complete the work, so we don't have to go back? It adds to us. I know there's a deficiency.
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely, and those are discussions moving forward and that's just part of that resume, so to speak, when you look at contractors and if they can do the work.
Okay.
Anything for Councillor Parzal?
Yeah, just reading the stats part just reminded me, this is for crosswalks. The, I met with a group of people who are visually impaired a couple of years ago and they were talking about, they made a request to Sean, through me to Sean, about having the crosswalks. You know where you, the curb goes down into a bit of a well, so the depth perception is a real issue for them? And there was a certain type of paint that did shine through ice and snow and I dropped back to them because I was assured that it would be done, it was an easy fix, but I hadn't seen it. So just, just reading this report just promptly reminded me of that. So could you look into that?
I will follow up and just get some details on that.
And I wonder, there's a different way, this is just me getting back at you, Kevin, here. Under the monthly activities for August, I read this and it just struck me as being revelatory to me because I didn't know that we did this sort of thing. It says two cremations, blank, 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 at Brookside Cemetery, four cremations at City Cemetery. Didn't those cremations take place in, in a more appropriate place or did they actually happen at the, that's my dink, I'm sorry.
Thank you for that.
Very important.
Anything further for Kevin?
And just as a quick update to council, and I don't know if Kevin, if, we should've been to bury, but we have the oval and I got a tag that the oval's been dug up behind the high school and so they're having, struggling trying to get it flooded, so just if anybody hears about it, that they're, I know that the staff are working on, you, I don't know if Kevin?
Well, school district is doing geothermal project for South Peace School, as I understand it. And I haven't been back there, but I've heard that they've tore the whole sports field up, drilling holes for geothermal. So I'm not even sure, without looking at it, if it's even possible to flood it. It may not, it might not be a state where you can even do anything about it.
It's the football field down the track.
That's, that's the little I know about it.
Wow. Anyway, just for information, if anybody hears about, thank you, Kevin. So a motion to recess to close, please. Councillor Wilbur, Secretary Councillor Javecov, all those in favor, opposed carried, thank you. So we got lunch?